Good afternoon and welcome to the Monday, September ninth, two thousand and twenty-four Town Council Meeting in the town of Orano. We'll start with our agenda with a roll call. Roll call shows that Councilor Larway, Councilor Marks, Councilor Demerit, Councilor Kenny, Councilor Powers, Councilor Baker are here in attendance. Councilor Berthasol is away and not feeling well, so she won't be joining us this evening. The first item on our agenda is to go, we'll accept the motion to go into executive session pursuant to M R S A, Section four oh five, six A, a personnel matter. Could I get a motion?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. All in favor, we don't have to roll call. All in favor, that was six to no, six to zero. We're going to move into executive session. We'll be back in about fifteen minutes, maybe even less. Thank you. Pete, are you okay? Are we live again?
We are good to go.
Good to go. All right. Welcome back. We are now, we've out of executive session and moving to agenda review. First on the agenda review, I would like, we'd like to move, like a motion to move item order twenty-four one ninety-nine to immediately after approval of the minutes as a new business item.
Motion.
Second.
Yeah, let's just take one, just to be, yep. We have moved and seconded. All in favor of moving order one ninety-nine to right after approval of the minutes. It's unanimous. Thank you. And under agenda review, we have, Clint, we've got several items here. Are these for public information? Do we want to have a discussion on any of these?
We're just working towards the new format of agendas. So anything that's officially queued up, that's been referred to committee, is going to show up as a reminder for the council, the things that you've asked to be sent to committee. So there's three items that have been referred to through a council meeting to go to committee. Those are the three listed there, and there's no, I have no record of any items being tabled by this council. We're just putting those for reference. There's no action. It's just reminding you of what items are there as you keep sending things, and if the list gets bigger and bigger, you will know that.
Councilor Marks.
I just had one question. I wasn't entirely sure that order twenty-four seventy-four, about sixty-four. Can someone tell me what that order was? I'm not clear that that.
Yep. So that was last winter before I started, but you've also brought it up twice since then. There's been conversations about the, how the notifications come to the council for things over seventy-five hundred dollars, which you had set it at. But the understanding here is that you also are setting budgetary decisions that have spending over seventy-five hundred. So sometimes those do or don't. It's been inconsistent. So I think the conversation was, should we be discussing changing that? So that if it's approved in the annual budget as a capital purchase, do you need to come back and approve it before it goes out to bid and approve the bid, or is it already approved because of the budget process?
Makes sense. I just didn't remember when we'd referred it. So if it was back in the winter, I wouldn't remember. That makes sense. Thanks.
I just had a, I have an agenda adjustment. Maybe, maybe it's a question, but I'm thinking it would make sense to move order twenty-four one ninety-two in front of order twenty-four one eighty-six. It seems like we are approving the spending of, unless I'm misreading where there's that ninety thousand opera is coming from. It looks like we're approving spending it, and then down below, we're talking about whether we're going to create it.
Which, Leo, which order did you think it should be moved in front of?
I think twenty-four one ninety-two needs to be in front of twenty-four one eighty-six. Because twenty-four one ninety, twenty-four one eighty-six also has thirty thousand for the Sebago, which I don't, there's no discussion in front of that. This, I guess I'm still getting used to this new format, but normally it seems to me that that type, we would have had that in committee and had a real discussion about it. Instead, the first we're seeing of it is an order to approve it, and that feels like we're skipping a lot of the process to me. Is that making sense to anybody?
Clint, go ahead. You got some.
It is a top order question because they are related to the same ninety thousand dollars.
Right. And the way it's set now, you're asking to approve the spending, approve spending ninety thousand, and then further in the budget, we say, hey, are we gonna now asking to approve financing the ambulance? So we free up that ninety thousand that we've already approved spending. So the order is.
You could change them. That would take a vote.
All right. Let's see that. Leo has added a motion to move order twenty-four one ninety-two ahead of order twenty-four one eighty-six.
Yes, I'm also not sure about, because twenty-four one eighty-six also has that thirty thousand for Sebago, which we've not had any discussion about.
Yeah, we'll deal with, we'll talk about it when we get to it. Okay.
Okay, well, so that would be it.
Is there a second on Leo's motion?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Marks. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. So we'll move that up. Any other agenda review items from councilors? Okay, we'll move on to item four, approval of the minutes. Can we get a motion on Town Council Meeting Minutes from August twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four?
Moved.
Moved? Seconded?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussions, corrections, additions, amplifications to the minutes? Get all three of those in. Okay. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. That's approval minutes. And next we'll take order per, right before going to public comment, we'll take an order of new business, and that is order twenty-four one ninety-nine, order confirming the town manager appointment and contract of the new fire chief. We'll take a motion to put that on the table.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Town Manager Clint DeShan, would you like to introduce this item for us?
So again, per town rules, I'm bringing forward my recommendation. We went through a lengthy process where we've had a review, had independent help from retired fire chief to review the applicants for fire chief, then went to an internal committee of staff. From there, we went to another round where we had some presentations to a full group of senior staff with some prompts and some questions unique to Orano that would be faced by the chief candidates. After those, we spent some time reviewing them, and I'm proud to present tonight that we'd like to, I'd like to recommend Thomas Higgins as the next fire chief for the town of Orano. He comes to us as, with lots of experience as a fire chief in this area, both for Herman and Bangor. And if you have any questions for me, he's also prepared to come up and chat with you as well. But I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Well, we'll invite him up here in just a second once we get done a little business. If that's okay. Any other discussion or questions for the town manager on the process before we take a vote and recognize Tom? Yep. All those in favor appointing Tom, Thomas Higgins, the new fire chief, well, confirming the town manager appointment and contract as the new fire chief. It's unanimous, Tom. Welcome to Orano. Will you come on up and introduce yourself to? Yeah. And when you hear the music start to play, you have to kind of stop. Yeah.
Thank you. I'm very pleased to be named the next fire chief here in the town of Orano. Orano's a town that I've always admired from afar, even though I've never lived up here, worked up here. It's a wonderful community. I'd like to thank the town manager for putting together a nice process, and then I see a number of the staff that are part of the process back there as well. So I'm excited. I'm gonna finish up my career in Bangor, take a couple of weeks off, and then I'll be excited to be here for my first day.
Great. Great. Welcome. Any question, we're all set. Any questions? Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice job, Clint, and thank you to the staff and everyone else who participated in the search committee. I know those are a lot of work and really, really pleased with the outcome. So thank you.
Clint, to be clear, what day is his first day?
October twenty-first.
October twenty-first, first day. Great. And thank you to the team at the fire department. We've stepped up and provided leadership during this interim time. Those, it's always a challenge as well. Next up on our agenda is public comment. Public comment is a chance for members of the public to speak with us about items that are not on the agenda. We ask people to, you know, cap it to five minutes, and we remind people that as part of our policy, we ask whether it's positive or negative not to speak about employees of Orano by name. Perfectly willing to discuss us by name or departments by site departments, but we don't, we don't entertain discussing people's personnel matters in public comment. So with that, was anyone who'd like to participate in public comment? Thank you. So would you mind introducing yourself?
Hi, Jeff Gordon. Oh, it's Jeff, and he's got a list. So you're in a problem. I just want to speak to a couple of things that you're going to be talking about tonight. I want to express my sincere and great support for the application for a mini grant from Jasmine Broadhead. Cultural entrepreneurship is something that the Orano Economic Development Corporation has been discussing for several months. This is a perfect example of what that concept entails. If you want to know more about cultural entrepreneurship, let me know, and I can send you some information about it. I want to bring to attention to the council the fact that I believe we have a problem in our ordinances around building permits. There are projects around town that gets, a building permit gets taken out, project starts. If it's an indoor project, fine, it can drag on for months or years, perhaps, with no real consequence to the neighborhood. But when it's something that's viewed exterior on the building, you're tearing off a porch, you're building a house, which can create lots of disruptions in the neighborhood. There's no process in place to have a building permit expire. So there are cases around town. I don't want to call anybody out on it, but there are cases around town where it's been going on for literally years now. That a project has been started and it's not completed. I think something needs to be done about that, about having building permits expire in some, in some fashion. I just want to express my appreciation to Clint, the new manager. I've, since he's been on board, I really like what I see. I see lots of good things happening, and I'm tributing them to your leadership.
You're technically violating our policy about naming people, but maybe you could speak to the town manager's office and what a good job. All right. Manager's office is doing.
Point taken. I brought, I brought up in previous meetings the issue about the trashcans around town, and I, and the council said they were going to take that up, and I haven't heard any more about that. I'd like to know more about what's being done about that. I think we need to have a little more detail given to the community about what's happening on the council policies committee. The minutes for those are pretty much just a repeat of the agenda for the meeting without any information about what's being talked about. I don't know, are those recorded? I don't know. They are? Okay, I can, I can, I stand corrected, and I'll go look at the recordings. Something that was happening when I was on council, as I was leaving council, the manager and I were trying to address the issue of municipally-owned properties. I think the town owns way too many parcels in town. I don't believe that a parcel should be owned by the town unless there is a stated and established public purpose for the municipality to own that parcel in view of the real problems we have with housing in the area. I think there are a lot of lots in town that could be built upon if the town didn't own them and or had a purpose for those lots. I want to applaud the comprehensive planning committee that's been going on. That's been a really good process. Azabul's really doing a great job leading that, and I look forward to that whole process starting publicly in the next month. And on the website, on the agenda, I like the new format for the agendas. I like the fact that the items are discussed. There's links to them there. I would suggest that the links open in a separate window rather than in the same window. It makes it very cumbersome to move around in the agenda. Just a technical detail. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Jeff. I just forwarded back an email, we sent you March following, we sent a full comment, we just thought, thought whether follow meeting after came in, they're briefing some staff. Update you where that was. Should you go back to your inbox ready now? That's the last response I have ever gotten from Town Council. Thank you for coming in. That's a long ago. Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment you and you have said? Anyone going to hand out key online? Okay, next up, thank you for that. Next up on our agenda is item six, presentation and discussion, the Union Street Boat Launch. Update on that?
Sure.
Sorry, my, my mic was off that whole time. So I made a joke about how fast I responded to Jeff and then called nagging up on the Union Street Boat Launch, item six on our agenda.
Hi, everyone. Megan Mazella, Parks and Rec Director. So in the memo, you can, that's attached to the agenda. This is a continuation and an update of a project that was started in May of two thousand and twenty-three by a resident who was concerned about their neighborhood and wanted to see what they could do to kind of improve the world around them. The most recent part of this memo, it was in April when there was a staff-led community meeting to discuss the potential for the boat launch on Union Street with the residents that live in that area. We discussed kind of hopes and dreams, what they'd like to see there. We discussed some of the barriers in place, like shoreline zoning setbacks and what permissions we would need from other entities. That property has received funds in the past by other entities, so there is some deed restrictions that I helped to communicate and enlighten the public on. So we knew kind of where we could expand or not. Part of the conversation with the Maine Bureau of Parks and Lands, they're supportive of one of the desires, which was increased education to that parcel. We discussed including something like a kiosk, something like small signages to acknowledge local flora and fauna in places in previous uses of the of that park, as well as adding a gazebo-style amenity. The, the thing that came out of that public meeting was people were looking for some type of shelter. So that will be something that will be brought back to that community group to see maybe what they exactly had in mind with some ideas out of a. community group to see maybe what they exactly had in mind with some ideas out of my department of how exactly we would do that and what kind of structures we have in other parks that maybe we could replicate in this one. They, the Bureau of Name Parks and Lands also required more formally designated boat launch spaces and recreation spaces, as there is a lot of parking in that area. And formally dedicating an ADA speed, a space. So that will require some signage similar to our other parks, another parking style signage. So it's really distinguishable what is where. Upon this discussion with council, if what has been presented is making sense and we are moving forward, the next step with me would be physical letters would go back out to the community to have another community meeting. About how to progress and what exactly would be going where. The step after that would be to bring those exact steps to council and to show you what we've kind of come up with together before purchasing said things. The other thing I'd like to acknowledge is that we are a little bit off the original slated timeline for this project. That is mostly because there were some quite drastic upsets in the Parks and Rec world, which caused me to go a little bit off schedule. And I continue to be a little bit off schedule with this project specifically due to pool issues, new staffing, such and such, but really wanted to get this in front of council to show that we are still continuing to progress in the projects we. Nothing's been left behind, but it's just slowed down a little bit is all. So. Any questions or comments for me?
Council Marks?
I just had one question about the notation that a children's structure of some kind was not permitted and, and why was that exactly? There was some, I know the community, the neighborhood had asked for something potentially for kids in that park. Can you just address that?
So the reason I was given was that would be a change of use. It is a boat launch. It is deeded as a boat launch, so it has to stay a boat launch. They were concerned about increased traffic to a space if we created amenities that didn't quite match the boat launch use. So that was the reason for a play structure swings of that sort of nature. I didn't get into incredibly specifics, but just from a safety perspective, there's private property on one side, there's a road on another side, there's a river on another side. You'd have to fence and I didn't get into the weeds of that, but it would be quite challenging even without that restriction.
That's really helpful. I just wanted to hear some more details about that. And then I guess just sort of related to that, I think in the community conversation, there was also some discussion about like one of those like porch swings, sorts of swings, like on the gazebo or somewhere nearby that is something that moves. Is that the sort of thing that fits with a gazebo or is that like also not allowed under that? Do you think or do you not know?
That, that would be. It would depend exactly on the installation of that said device. Something else we had talked about was adding benches in the area. I think the focus was adding a sheltered structure gazebo, a paragola, something like that. And then kind of evaluating the existing space. Like I said, there are significant setbacks in that property, so it wouldn't quite make sense to just pile everything into one. If we can use benches and utilize the funding council has attributed towards this to create some extra spaces, I think we would do so. This was kind of the priorities out of that meeting.
Council Baker?
Timing, yeah. I mean, not concerned about that at all. We had talked about this last spring that we were undertaking a project in your busiest season. So kudos that you've been able to do this much this far. Just getting the knotweed out of there is a huge, huge help. As far as the gazebo, whatever else is going in there, to clarify, that's whatever we do with the boat launch, it's still going to be within the $10,000 budget that we set aside, or do you envision asking for additional funds? Once you have more town meetings and, or more public meetings, yeah.
So I know the, the members of the public that did attend this meeting were concerned with the limitations of that fund. I think it would be wise to proceed with the $10,000 we've been allotted. And there might be opportunities later on to add to said project. I don't think we have to give up on any kind of dreams, but I think it makes sense to kind of go one step at a time. This is what's been allotted. Let's work with what we have and move forward at a later date.
Perfect. Fully agree. Great answer.
Council Kenny?
So to date, have we not spent money? Was that all volunteer for the knotweed? Is that what it was called? Is that all volunteer work?
So this project has had a couple of things go in tandem. The work that Public Works has done and the Environmental Services has done was not attached to the amenities. This project was specifically attached to the amenities. Some of those things that you've seen happen at the park were scheduled to happen anyway, given our invasive species progress in town. So I'm, I'm here specifically to touch on the amenities of the, of the boat launch. Not some of the environmental services work that has been done. I helped communicate things forward, but the, the, we have other members.
So we still have the full $10,000, is that?
Correct, yes.
And this kiosk, was that a, was that ever something that surfaced from the residents or was that just from the Maine Bureau of Parks? That's something they said you could do that.
That was a specific ask I had because one of the main outcomes of that meeting was definitely the educational piece. So a kiosk is a kind of an easy thing to get a lot of those educational pieces in place. Again, the setbacks are quite significant. So where they wanted to set maybe other signage would pose some challenges. So a larger kiosk in an area. Kind of fits both needs.
Sorry, I meant gazebo. I did say kiosk, but was the gazebo something that was ever came up from the community stuff, or was that something that they said, no, you can't do a play structure, so you can do this?
The community had quite a range of wants. That was absolutely one of them. They, the community, I would say, was more interested in a sheltered area. So whether it's a gazebo, a paragola, something of that effect, the Maine Bureau of Parks and Lands did not have an issue with a sheltered structure. I use the word gazebo. It's a little bit easier to envision. It seems to be what people are leaning towards, but a sheltered structure is more where we're going, but they didn't have an issue with anything of the like.
Thank you.
Really appreciate the work on this and the point that Councilor Baker made about the, your work this summer and having the right priorities, given, you know, types of things that need to be done. I do think, do we have something we're going to share later about the Penobscot Nation and discussions that are happening there? I do think that, do you know if, if all the land that was been reclaimed from the knotweed, is that all part of the deed with the, with the Bureau of the Parks, the State Bureau?
So the property, boundaries of the property is all one deed. That makes sense. So it's just like you would purchase a home and that is your lot lines. It is lot lines of that property is all what you see.
If you haven't been by in a year, you go by, you walk your dog down. It's also, in addition to be a boat launch, it's also a dog bath place for some of us. And it is, it's amazing the work that's been done to reclaim that land and I'm really in plant trees and things like that. So a lot of progress has been made and I'm excited that you'll be bringing people together for another conversation and excited to get something back for us to look at as a council. So thank you for your leadership. Anything else on this one? Great. Thank you, Megan. Next up on our agenda is item number seven, public hearings. Public hearings are an opportunity for the community to provide feedback on specific items considered by the council. I will. Are we going to just do these back to back? This is a different format, I think. Is this a different format? Yep. So we'll open up public hearing A to consider a Victus license for Brewers of the North, DBA, Aroma Joe's 99 Park Street.
Hello, everyone. Patrick SD, code enforcement officer. Our recommendations are also based off of town clerk, police and fire. And with Aroma Joe's paperwork is in, inspections are completed and we're recommending approval.
Any questions from council? Any questions from the public? I suppose I have one question. How do you, what do we do with the, sometimes the traffic? I mean, good on them, right? They're so busy, but it seems like sometimes the traffic's from the drive-through comes out into the rotary. Is that part, why do you consider that type of thing?
So lucky for me, I don't have to deal with traffic.
Yeah.
But that would be a police department issue, so I could work with Dan on any concerns with that.
I think it's, I think it's pretty rare. I don't know if anybody else ever sees it. So I'm just, that was just a point of curiosity as much as anything else. So if people. Yep, if others bring it forward as a point of concern, I guess we'll know, know where to start.
Yeah. Yeah. So during a planning board review, when a project is started, a traffic study is done. But you just really never know how well that business is going to do, you know?
Yeah, they sell a lot of stuff. Yep. Yep, great. Okay, we'll close the public hearing, public hearing A. Public hearing B to consider a class three wine and class four malt liquor license, special amusement permit for music, dancing, entertainment and Victus license for Million Dreams LLC, doing business as Black Bear Cinemas, 6 Stillwater Avenue.
Inspections are completed and paperwork is in. We're recommending approval.
Any questions from the council? Any comments from the public? Yep, we will close. Oh, Council Powers.
Sorry, is this, is this licensed new for Black Bear? Awesome. All right, thanks.
So beer and wine.
Awesome. They'll sell alcohol at the movies. Is that what you're asking?
That's a good idea.
Sounds like a strong endorsement from the right side of the table. Okay. No more comments. We'll close public hearing B. I like to extend these out for at least a minute, so Manny doesn't have to write down the same start time and close time of the, of the meeting. We'll open public hearing C to consider an automobile graveyard and/or junkyard permit for the town of Orno off Taylor Road. Pat?
And inspections are done. Paperwork is in and we're recommending approval. It looks really good up there. So good work to Public Works.
Okay, excellent. Any questions for council? Council Baker?
So Clint explained to me what an automobile graveyard is, but my second question is, and it's really probably a stupid question, but why does the town need an automobile graveyard?
So with the recycling of the metal and with like the white goods, the, you know, with the refrigerators.
Requires the.
We gotta, yeah, we gotta make sure that that's dealt with correctly.
So it's not a place where we can park old police cars and?
Right. So junkyards are just not with automobiles. It has to do a lot with just junk in general.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Okay, that is, we have one more to go, right?
Yes.
Oh, you're gonna take that one? Okay. I will say that's the, the Public Works graveyard is the cleanest graveyard I've ever seen in terms of just space and things like that. So that's well done. Now we'll open public hearing D to consider an automobile graveyard and/or junkyard permit for La Points Yard Incorporated, 201 Kelly Road. Count, uh, town manager, Deshan?
This is, so this is, we left it on the agenda. We wanted to be fully transparent to meet the goals and objectives. We're going to re-advertise this one. The name of the business had slightly changed, so the public hearing notification was in a different name. And we do not want, recommend you taking action when the name of the business is actually under a different permit name. It's no other major change, just they requested a change in name. So it's the same yard, same location, different name. Public hearing went out in the other name from the prior name of the ownership group. We want to, we've re-advertized already. It'll be on your next agenda. But I just didn't want to pull it and have people wonder why we posted a public hearing that never made it on an agenda.
Sure.
So we left it there so we could fully disclose what was going on.
Okay. Any questions for the manager on that? Is it La Points? Is, is that the accurate name that's on here now or is that the? The point what? Incorporated? Okay.
The Point Yard Incorporated.
Yep, great. All right. Well, thank you and I appreciate that piece of transparency. All right. So we will close the public hearings and open up everyone's favorite part of the meeting, acknowledgements by council members. We're going to start with the Jacob Baker side of the table and work our way to the Rob Larway side of the table.
Appreciate the side of the table. No, only acknowledgement, welcome back students. Thank you to Public Works and police and all the other departments that do a really good job at managing this time of year where our population doubles with sometimes rowdy individuals.
Council Powers?
I'd like to say thank you to the coaches at the school, because I know they all have other jobs and thank you for all the hard work they do. The soccer coaches and the field hockey coaches and there's others, there's a new volleyball club team at the high school and I just wanted to acknowledge that. And what else am I forgetting? There, there's some, oh, and the cross-country teams. And yep, so thank you to the coaches for all the hard work that you do on top of everything else that you do.
Council Kenny?
Yes, I'd acknowledge the, I guess, senior staff that was involved in the hiring of our, the search and the hiring of our new fire chief. Pretty excited to find a great candidate and a local candidate and appreciate all of the work that goes into that. I think it's been going on for eight weeks or something now. So wanted to acknowledge all of, all of your hard work there. And I guess piggybacking on welcome, welcoming college students. I want to encourage all of us to meet our new neighbors. If, if you have new neighbors moving in, we're, we're a college town. Let's embrace it and meet, meet, meet the new kids in town. They're, they're pretty, I'm right in the thick of it where I live and I've always had really good success introducing myself. Do it during the day probably is a good idea, but I wanted to encourage that.
Great. Thank you. Council Marks?
Thanks, Council Kenny. I totally agree with that. And thanks to all the other comments before. I just wanted to acknowledge our emergency medical staff, who I know do a terrific job all the time, but I think maybe had a particularly hard day today and really honor that work. I also honestly want to thank the river itself. We live in a pretty amazing place and this time of year I am awed by the still water pretty much every day. So that's what I've got.
Council Larway?
Nothing in addition to everything else. It's already been raised.
I would like to thank the Orno residents, Orno town staff, the police department, the school for their work with the Orno Stops Initiative that we announced as, for the launch of this new school year. Very grateful for that work. Happy to see it begin and know that it'll be a conversation we have year in and year out about as we work to establish a culture of roadway sharing and safety in Orno. I definitely want to echo the comments about welcoming our students to town. It is, it's wonderful. I love the seasons of Orno and I particularly, you know, I love it when they leave in the spring and we kind of, it town kind of quiets down. I love it. I love it when everybody gets back in the fall. And I agree with, with Councilor Kenny about the importance of greeting and meeting our new neighbors. I am, I'm prohibited from joining in their festivities as they play on their lawns and things like that near my house, but Jamie makes me walk great, but do not stop and drink with those boys. So I don't, but it's wonderful to have them there and it's, it's a great, it's great for our community. So thank you. Next up on the agenda is consent agenda. And this is an opportunity for the council to consider and move and vote on single, as a single action with no discussion on a set of items. Any member of the town council or any member of the public can request that any order on the consent agenda be removed and added to new business to allow for explanation and discussion prior to the vote. Are there any concerns with the items on the consent agenda before us today? Just making sure that that junkyard piece is not on the, yeah, it's not on the consent agenda. Okay. Can I get a?
A move to approve the consent agenda.
Moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of the consent agenda? That was unanimous. Thank you. Under action items and you're gonna have to, you might have to help me move some of these around that we moved before, so don't hesitate to. If I try and appoint the new fire chief again, stop me. Yeah, all right. Action items, order 24184 is an order designing FY24 year-end assigned fund balance. Do they have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Clint, you have something for us on this?
I just want to make sure that's the one, make sure I'm on the right one, designated and assigned fund balance is listed there for you in the orders themselves. You know, it's, it's just the way the staff's recommending to bring them forward.
Okay, so they're all going to come forward in the subsequent?
Yep.
Pieces here?
Yep.
Wait, Clint, so you're talking about 24185 or 24184? I don't see anything listed here on 28184.
Same orders.
I think, and I should have asked this before, just procedurally, I think I know what we're doing between 24184 and 24185, but just can you give us a high level? What we're doing?
Yeah, so what's gonna happen, yeah, these are again linked ones and I should have followed up, but you've got to assign your year-end fund balances. In order to do your year-end fund balances, you have to make a motion to do it. In order to get to those, the next list, again, is all the carryforwards that are going to come out of that. So if you approve all of those, you're assigning.
Again, is all the carryforwards that are gonna come out of that, so if you approve all of those, you're assigning that carryforward balance. So again, there. I guess I'd question as I look at this again, why it's two orders? I think you're doing, it's one action, you're setting those carryforwards, but then set your year-end designated fund balance.
Yeah, my question was gonna be, is, is that five oh three, one ninety-six the total, or is there some different total? And these are the ones that are gonna be put in?
The five oh three, one ninety-six is the list of the items below.
Right, so that, an order designating fiscal year twenty-four year-end assigned fund balance, I didn't know what that meant either, is there, is there? More than the five oh three, and should that be in that?
That is what being recommended from staff, that's the list of all the carryforward balances for the purposes that were listed that are recommended to be a carryforward from one year to the next.
So then, does it make sense to? Table order twenty-four, one eighty-four, and then move to, just move twenty-four, one eighty-five, or should we act twice, just to?
Before we even do that, Dan, can, Clint, can you just clarify Leo's question further? I just wanna be really clear, we're saying that the carryforward amounts of five oh three, one ninety-six. Are the full assigned fund balance, the assigned fund balance, also five oh three, one ninety-six, or there's more there?
The five oh three, ninety-six is your carryforward, your unassigned fine balance, fun balance. Let me pull it open, I've got some other information I can share here.
I'm actually only concerned about assigned fund because that's what it says, it doesn't say unassigned.
Sarah, we've, we've not seen unassigned yet, have we?
No, I'd be happy to see that too, but that's not in either of these orders, right? Yeah. Dan, you're always asking for a dad joke.
His other explanation, cuz it seems like there's one. Got all the detail for all of them. I'm just concerned, and again, I would wanna follow up, and I didn't ask that question of Zach, my concern is, is that you may have a requirement and ordinance that you make a vote. To do that, and it's just procedural, but I can't find it, I know that you can't set your unassigned, you, you cannot have your unassigned. Or assigned fund balances known without designating your carryforward, because. Carryforward sets what you end your year at, so that's the only thing I'm looking at is if there's an extra step, and I don't know if anybody. I'd have to check, but that's why I think it's two separate orders, is you have a requirement that you have to say that you're approving that number. And that's why I'm looking, is I thought that was a number that I did have here.
If it's something we have to do, let's. Approve or vote on twenty-four, one eighty-four, and then move on to twenty-four, one eighty-five. And if it's not needed, then we just.
And I can update.
Need a redundant step, but we don't have to do it again.
People, is that? Council Baker speak for others on this, or?
That's why I said, if it's approved.
Right, no, I get it, I just checking to see, I'm happy to call the vote, but I don't wanna call a vote and.
I feel fully comfortable on twenty-four, one eighty-five, I'm a little bit concerned about if the assigned fund balance is not a certain figure. It, it feels hard to designate and.
It is after you do your carry.
But we don't know what that figure is, based on this carryforward. I understand, so. Right. Yeah. Right, that's what I was trying to get clarity on, so in fact, the assigned fund balance would be five oh three, one ninety-six, just like the carryforward amount. And anything else would be unassigned, correct? That's fine, as long as that is clear, I'm good.
Okay, alright, we've got a motion on, we've got some clarity, and we have a motion on order twenty-four, one eighty-four, order designated FY twenty-four year-end assigned fund balance. All those in favor? Yeah, we're on, yeah, we're on one eighty-four. Yeah, that's unanimous. Okay, I'd take a motion on order twenty-four, one eighty-five. So moved. Moved by Council Baker, seconded by Council Larway.
Just verifying that these will all now, cuz they're assigned, they're all gonna have an assigned account number to them. With these amounts in them. Yep.
Getting some solid nods of yes in the back, and I heard a yes from the town manager. Okay. Council Baker?
And so these amounts were from last year's budget that didn't get spent, so. We, these amounts were already approved as last year's budget. Okay, then.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Thirteen thousand dollars left in Forest Avenue Traffic coming that we could talk about, I suppose, right, Bill? So, kidding, teasing. Don't stop, Leo, I'm, I'm just kidding. We've done enough for now, yeah, alright. Uh, we have an order twenty-four, one eighty-five on the, on the table, all those in favor? Yep, that's unanimous, thank you. Thank you, Clint. Next up, we're gonna move. Order, we decided before to move order twenty-four, one ninety-two, an order authorizing the town manager to obtain. Tax exempt lease purchase agreement with a hundred thousand dollar down payment to finance remainder up to two hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars. At a term not to exceed five years, and interest rate to be determined for the purchase of a new ambulance, and the purchase was authorized with order twenty-three, one forty-eight. Can we get a motion for that, please, so we can discuss it?
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded, and Clint, do you wanna walk us through? This?
So a year ago, you ordered an ambulance, and it was decided that you were gonna buy it completely out of your reserve, capital reserves and use some ARPA money. With the combination of everything that you have for ARPA reserves and capital reserves, it's more than what you need for the purchase price, its delivery's not scheduled till this summer coming. ARPA's lapsing, and we have a contract that did commit the ninety thousand to it, but our recommendations were coming back as we, and again, as, as the information that we. Attached is that you could finance this instead as a lease, lease purchase, put a hundred thousand dollar down. And you wouldn't need the ARPA funding, and you would still have over two hundred thousand dollars sitting in. Your reserve account, you could then reduce your reserve funding, this year was at a hundred and eight thousand, and just start doing twenty thousand dollars a year. That would mean you'd always have about approximately a third, or at least for the foreseeable. Next decade or two, enough to always make a hundred thousand dollar down payment, and every five years you would do a lease purchase. The active life of these ambulances is ten, and you're trying to get to a goal where you rotate them every five years, so when we were looking at this. I looked at this from the standpoint that we could do better capital planning using lease purchases of ambulances, rather than always having to save up. Three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a cash purchase, cuz then you're always trying to get to that, take advantage of the stability of an annual allotment. That you're setting aside, and then you would move about a forty-fourth, and again, that's what was attached, I gotta pull it up, you would move the. The cost of a lease. Purchase into your annual operating costs, so you would end up with a total cost of twenty thousand a year going to reserves and a lease purchase price of about another. Forty-six thousand, meaning you'd have seventy-six, sorry, fifty-six thousand, you'd have seventy-five, nine thirty-three per year instead of your hundred and eight. So it's a thirty thousand dollar annual savings, and you're committing to the two-year replacement plan, or the five-year replacement of two ambulances.
Council Kenny?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, if math is correct, I, I think they said six percent interest rate on two hundred and thirty-five thousand, which would be about. Thirty-six thousand dollars, or seventy-two hundred bucks a year. I'm, I'm not, I didn't see all of this background information, but it just doesn't seem like there's a, that we're saving. On, on, that we're saving.
It's, you're not saving, you're just spreading out your debt over ten years rather than saving up and buying one. And you've been saving for the past three, so what you're taking, you're about to spend down a hundred percent of your capital reserves, and. And then you'd have none there, so you'd have to build it back up, and you need to buy another one in four more years, so you're gonna have to commit to about eighty to ninety thousand a year, just in that. To reserves, so the idea was to bring forward capital, and again, six percent's estimated, we haven't gone out to bid, we're asking permission to go out to bid. And this would then reallocate the ARPA, because once it's not committed, and we can't get bids back in time, that's why we're bringing it forward. We're in a window with ARPA has to be committed, so if we leave it, and again, I'm fine, that's your other choice, status quo was a good choice to leave it, and we're just gonna pay cash. But we saw a window here where we could consider lease purchasing as opposed to a hundred percent purchase price.
And did we approve this in twenty-three or four? That we approved?
Twenty-three. It's been out, it's been out to, it was ordered over a year ago, it's set for delivery in June of twenty-five, it was a two-year build cuz of back ordering.
And, and the way it is, the ARPA funds are committed, there's no issue with, with that, we've spent it. Correct?
You've allocated it.
They're committed, which is all.
They are committed, correct.
Yeah, I guess I'm not seeing the reason for going back on this, and, and, and again, this is where I was thinking that. I know our formats have changed, but it just seems like, rather than have this discussion here, I would really rather have this discussion in a, in a finance meeting, to be honest. Because for me, I don't, I don't, I'm not seeing why, why we're, why we do this, this was a two-year ago commitment that we made. We've purchased, we've ordered, and now, and now switching, it doesn't, it's not, it's just not making sense to me. I apologize, maybe it makes perfect sense, but I, I can't make sense of it.
Staff is not recommending spending down a hundred percent of your reserves on, on ambulance purchases, we think it's better if you spread it out. We're fine either way, but that was the recommendation we're bringing forward, is rather than doing this, a simple two-year, a, a two-vehicle, five-year replacement plan. On a ten-year model of each of those is a really good plan, and it spreads it out over a ten-year amortization. Yes, you do lose money, it's more expensive cuz you're gonna pay interest, and you lose the interest on investment, but it doesn't require towns to have peaks and valleys in their budgeting process.
I, I mean, I feel like that's, we had, that was the whole planning, that, I feel like we had accomplished that, and staff, I think, did recommend back when we. When we made the purchase, they definitely recommended that we, that we do that, so I don't know what's come into the equation that we're trying to. Not do it now, or why we're changing the recommendation from a, a budget decision we made in twenty-three, seems, just. Seems out of the blue to me, and I'm still trying to scratch my head figuring out.
You can refer to Finance Committee if that's council's choice as well, we just have a timeline, mid-November roughly, to have all your ARPA funds committed, or you can leave it as is. And we don't have to have any Finance Committee meetings, it can just stay funded as is.
Yeah, and those are committed, so that's not a. Oh.
Yeah, I got it. Council Baker?
Yeah, so I just wanna make sure that I understand this as well, so we approved this a couple years ago. We set money aside to pay for it. And this order would be to say we would lease it, is that? Sarah, Sarah's kinda shaking her head, no, Clint, you're shaking your, oh, you're saying yes, correct. Okay, so then I guess, I mean, I. Am in agreement with Leo, not to send it to finance, but I, I, I don't see why we would do that. Because we would incur about thirty-six thousand dollars in interest. Fifty-six thousand, okay. Thirty-six thousand in interest. I just did a quick amortization schedule, so it's about thirty-six thousand in interest.
Correct.
So. This, so by doing the lease, then, we wouldn't be spending the money that we've already set aside for this? I. Yeah, I'm just, I'm having a, like Leo, I am confused as to why we would do this.
Council Marks, you wanna add something?
Um, no, I guess I just wanted to say, I've also, I'm also confused about this, and I'm understanding, if I'm hearing correctly, that. There's a trade-off we would be doing, we would be paying more in the end, right, and I'm unclear whether it's thirty-six thousand or fifty-six thousand over those five years. But we would clearly be paying more in total, and I understand that the trade-off for that is some form of stability. In which I thought, as Leo was saying, that we perhaps already had, because we were making a yearly payment into a fund of our own, as opposed to. Making yearly leased payments to somebody else, so I'm a little confused, are we trying to do it cuz we're trying to free up ARPA money? I mean, that's my question, or why are we doing it?
Partly, but again, with all the different projects, you're laddering in everything you do, if you're always committed to making cash purchases of your ambulances, we can do that. That would be more, and again, that would be the policy directive. Typically, large purchases, three hundred thousand or more, you would look at different opportunities where you don't have to have those large savings. You've saved up enough money, you have three hun, over three hundred thousand in the bank right now, dedicated to this reserve. Come June, when we buy this, all but fifty thousand will be spent on this purchase price, and then you'll have to start building it back up. This was a plan to spend a third of it, one-third of that, so you'd start making commitment for one-third down payment, and you'd finance the rest, just much like when you buy your own car. You're making a big down payment, if you could buy it cash, it would be great, not saying you can't, you certainly can, but now we have another one to plan for. Four years after the purchase of this, actually three, if it's still a two-year build, so this was a chance just to spread them out. And save some money in the bank so we can get better approaches, or I shouldn't say better, different approaches to how we finance a portion and make large down payments. But yes, it is much more interest, and if we're committed to always paying cash, we will build those capital investment plans around it. That's one of your goals to me, I saw this when we came forward, that we've gotta kinda address this, because with the ARPA money. Come November, this will be a purchased vehicle, hundred percent, no lease, no nothing. This was the only window I had, and when I became aware of it, when we were going through all the ARPA funding models of what's left over and different balances. I knew I had to get this in front of you, if a workshop had been better, we could have workshopped it, but again, we're going to action items more, where these discussions can be more fluid here with the council. Again, timing is what it is, but that was the attempt to try to look at it, you have the choices, we're, we made a recommendation, but we're happy with either, you can go either way.
Council Baker?
And, and I'm fine, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with the process, I don't think. We need to make a big deal out, a workshop out of this and hash it out further, my questions were, again, more towards. Why we're doing that, and, and I don't, unless I've missed something, and it doesn't sound like I have, this. Doesn't seem like a good financial decision to. Debt fund this as, when we already have the cash sitting in the bank.
Yeah, I would, I would, that's, I think that's my main thing as well, it's, it's an, it is an extra thirty-six grand, and. I don't, I don't see the purpose for adding, that's obviously taxpayer dollars, and so I, I prefer not to. Add, add more cost to this ambulance, which we agreed to purchase two years ago.
Yeah, I, I appreciate, we'll have to talk more about how to bring these kinds of like, maybe like philosophical things, and you know, Clint and I met for an hour today, actually. Talk about, as you know, from his contract, we have. Goal setting, and you know, we have written, written goals that we will provide to him as part of our, as part of our work, and we met today to start talking about how we. Get the timing of that stuff going, so. I think these kind of philosophical, if we, like a philosophical change in direction, makes sense to do in a longer discussion, but I appreciate the. The bringing us ideas and, and getting us to think about it, and, and then we could seek with them, you know, as appropriate when we're doing our capital work, but.
Yeah, just to piggyback that, I mean, at times, I think when, you know, when they're offering one percent or some, one and a half percent, and we, there's options for that, but. I, then, then those, when those, when those crop up, I think they're worth considering, but in just, in this case, and, yeah, back to. Back to, this feels like it should have been in a, in a, in that setting, so I appreciate it.
Okay, anymore questions or comments? Yep, Rob?
I would say I, I wasn't, I mean, I, I think this makes sense in a couple different ways, one, considering the, the other things that you wanna. Uh, try to spend the ARPA money on, I see in order one eighty-six, I, I can see. How this all fits together, and I'm, I guess I'm not as opposed to the debt servicing over a, a longer period of time, as it seems like the rest of the council feels. I think the stability sounds like one reason, another reason is the freeing up of the ARPA funds for the other uses. And I get that it does spend, costs more over time, but at any one year, it seems like it's actually a, a lower. Draw on the taxpayer per year, so I don't know.
Okay, we ready to, go ahead, Sarah?
Just as far as the ARPA funds issue goes. If we do not approve this, what part of the other recommended ARPA situation is going to have to change?
The other order, the, the ninety thousand that was allocated from ARPA is no longer available, we still gotta look at it some point, and we've been working through this, I was gonna share the information. We have a list of projects related to ARPA, such that before the ninety thousand dollars is. Us, if it were not reassigned, even without that reassignment, we have two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars of ARPA funds that we need to reallocate. And so the staff was going to come forward at some point, talking to you again on how to, what to do with those. Whether those should go towards a, but they've gotta be specified, they have to go to something specific, right now, by order, anything that's left over is gonna reduce. The cost of the Webster Side project, so there's two hundred and eighty-nine going to reduce that, you could consider, again, an option, not. Um, you could consider, again, an option, not a recommendation, that if you don't do this, and you wanted to do some of the things on the coming order using the two-eighty-nine, it would shrink the amount that's available. Again, with the two-eighty-nine, as we free up capital infrastructure, I'm trying to judge whether or not Route Two becomes a commitment for engineering and design of three hundred thousand, and you've asked for ways to fund it, two-eighty-nine's close to three hundred thousand, you're coming close to having in your capital reserves right now. It's just looking at the different levers, trying to figure out which ones to share them all with you, so that you can figure out which one to pull. And unfortunately, because of timing and planning, you're coming in pretty layered with a lot of projects getting pushed forward really quickly, just because some of them have been sitting waiting for new staff and team to come forward and start working them for you. We're working on them, and there's a lot of moving pieces, and that's why we're trying to bring them forward.
So, um, that two-eighty-nine, if we don't vote to do this, would become closer to two-hundred?
No, it's the actual, the others. If you do do this, it becomes three-seventy, three-sixty-nine.
So, the two-eighty-nine exists even if we don't pass this, and then it becomes three-something?
Correct.
Okay.
Can you expand on that? What it, you said reallocate? Has it, it's already been allocated, that two-eighty-nine?
No, so as of the, so, okay, I got a spreadsheet. As you ended the year with a half a million dollars in twenty-twenty-four, you allocated three projects to it, which la, which brought the grand total that was available at that time of seven hundred thousand. Since then, you've agreed to a pickup truck for the Public Works Department, two-quarter of a million to the Webster Side project, did some pool liner costs for another eleven thousand. So, that brings you to a total of a four-hundred thou, eleven thousand committed. When the seven hundred thousand last year left, there's a balance of two-eighty-nine, one-oh-eight. And that was, again, and I can get this out, this was, had this for information, I didn't think you were going to go into this conversation to this level, so that wasn't part of the packet, because it wasn't really seen as part of the conversation, but it's now becoming part of it. I can send that out for those, and it's probably something you should see, because that would move your balances and, you know, to that two-eighty-nine, one-oh-eight balance to reallocate, however you want. Currently would be going to the Webster project, because we knew we had this issue when we brought that to you, that we weren't going to zero out every project, so we had to have a place, because if it's not allocated, you lose it. So, we allocated all remaining balances to the Webster.
To Webster. So, right now, that two-eighty-nine is allocated to Webster?
That two-eighty-nine will default to Webster, because it has not been allocated. You have not designated it for any projects in specific. You haven't said, I want to spend it on this, or that, or that. If you do say you want to spend it, we have to have an order, we have to have a contract with that organization, or actually have completed the work. Sorry, ARPA one-on-one real quick.
Oh, yeah, and that's.
And that's not what I expected.
Yeah, no, maybe we, you know, and this is, I apologize, because maybe we should have, when we had our, our, our weekly agenda meeting, maybe we should have talked about doing a, yep, all one encompassing ARPA discussion, and then pick, pick apart the direction we wanted to go. Um, that might have been.
We do have time for that, if, that's the direction of the council, because that's, we are, that's why I'm getting it here to you.
Yeah, why don't we bust through this, and then we can talk about it in the, um, future agenda items and requests for, you know, requests for supporting items, uh, moving forward. So, if we could, let's, are we ready to vote? It sounds like we have a sense of where we're going to go on this one. So, um, the order before anybody else, the order before us is order twenty-four, one-ninety-two, authorizing the town manager to do the tax exempt lease purchase agreement for the ambulance. All those in favor? Council Larway, all those opposed? And five opposed and one in favor. It, Council Larway was for it. Got, and that closes that item. Good. Thank you for the discussion. I appreciate the ideas and the initiative. Okay, the next order is probably something we can act on quickly. I'll take an order on twenty-four, one-eighty-six. Order authorizing town manager to reassign ninety thousand dollars in ARPA funds to the following projects. Eighteen thousand, five hundred for Human Resource Consulting, thirty thousand for Sabego Technics, and forty-one thousand, five hundred for Webster Neighborhood Project. Can I get a motion to put that on the table?
Some moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Clint, is this now? This is still, the ARPA money still, there's still.
You have two-hundred, yes, there is over, yes, there's over two, almost three hundred thousand worth of ARPA funding. If you did allocate those, they would be allocated. You can choose, and again, they're listed as three individuals, one, none, all.
Yeah, so, um, I think, um, Council Baker, you want to go first? Okay. Thanks. Yeah, no, I think, um, we have a, ahead of us, we have, I think, an important order, uh, resourcing the town manager to do some very important human resource work that, that needs to be done. I think, this is my opinion as one counselor, I don't think we're ready to make a decision on the thirty thousand on the Sabego Techniques Enhanced Concepts Route Two yet, until we kind of decide what direction we're going to go with the, um, with our commitment to a design and a resolution on that, and the forty-one thousand, five hundred on the Webster Neighborhood Project. Is that the, um, the part of the existing wastewater and, um, storm runoff and sewer project, or is that a different? Is that different?
Uh, that, um, and again, that was cleaning up the ninety thousand. That's probably moot, because it was easy to identify. If you didn't do the ambulance, you'd have ninety thousand to reallocate from that alone. So, yes, you could leave that, because everything by default goes to the Webster project.
Any discussion?
We make an amendment to allocate the eighteen thousand, five hundred?
I'd support that.
Yeah, I'd support that as well.
Support it.
Okay. Set a motion, so.
A move.
Okay. Move to, uh, make, amend order twenty-four, one-eighty-six, so it only has the eighteen thousand, five hundred in Human Resource Consulting? Is that okay? Yep. And I need a second for that?
Seconded.
Seconded. Okay, all those in favor of that amendment? That's unanimous. Um, all those in favor in passing order twenty-four, one-eighty-six as amended with just the eighteen thousand, five hundred for the Human Resource Consulting? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, and we'll have additional discussions about the enhanced concept piece, um, later on, for sure. Okay, order twenty-four, one-eighty-seven, order authorizing the town manager utilize capital infrastructure reserve funds in order to pay payment request number fourteen from Sergeant Corporation, the amount of twenty-six thousand, eight-hundred-and-five dollars and fifty-eight cents for retainage from the North Main Avenue project. Can I have a motion on that?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Moving seconded. Any, any informational material from the town manager on this one? Anything? Nope. Yep, got the memo.
Got the memo. I mean, it's, it's just allocating those funds. Uh, as a manager, I felt it was important to bring it forward. It wasn't clear in your active, your actions, whether you had done this or not. It's over seventy-five hundred bucks, so let's get them to take action.
So, potentially someday, when these things are budgeted and agreements in place, we won't take any action on these kinds of things, but we'll, we'll discuss that.
Can I just ask for myself? I'm not fully sure I understand what retainage means, since I've never been asked to take a vote on one of these yet. Is, can you explain that exactly?
All projects can have different retainage amounts. It's the amount of money we don't pay the contractor who did the work, typically for a year, to make sure everything is good. By the time they're done, done, and we've seen it, it's all settled and it's in place, and then once we get a word from the engineers, everything maintained and it's still in good shape, pay them. That's typically what the retainage is.
Yep.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other? Okay, let's, uh, take a vote on order twenty-four, one-eighty-seven. All those in favor? Jacob, I couldn't, yeah, I got you, okay. Thank you. Uh, it's unanimous, and that passes. Now, order twenty-four, one-eighty-eight, order authorizing the town manager annual agreement with Lori Bouchard LLC for Human Resources Consulting Services for your total cost, not to exceed eighteen thousand, five hundred through the American Rescue Plan Act funding. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
I'll just say you have a lot of materials. I'm sorry, but you provided a lot of great information. Um, this is outside of your normal, this is, did not follow a bid process, but to get the ARPA funds encumbered, I didn't think I could do a process with other vendors. I do have worked with her at one other organization in the past, and I know other organizations that have worked with her very successfully. So, that's why I brought it forward.
Okay. I think it's great, and it's, I think you made a really clear case as to why this kind of help is needed, and I'm happy to support it. So, if there's no more discussion, all those in favor? That one's unanimous? Okay. All right, now, we already appointed the fire chief. Tom, welcome again. We already did order twenty-four, one-ninety-two, so now we're on to order twenty-four, one-ninety-three. In order setting the date of October seventh, twenty-twenty-four at five P M. for a public hearing to consider amendments to the Town of Orno Code of Ordinance, Chapter eighteen, land use Article Four, zoning district, section eighteen through one-oh-six, schedule of uses in Article Five, performance standards, section eighteen, one-thirty, excavation, removal and filling of lands. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Now, this is just to call a hearing, right? So, do we have any discussion on this one? Yeah, go ahead. I, I have questions too. Yeah.
Um, so this is, I, if I'm understanding it correctly, it's sort of just taking them out of the process that everyone else in town would have to go through when it comes to excavating, or, or moving, or, uh, filling lands. We're just more treating them as their own entity, which they pretty much are. Or the, the, this hearing moves to take this off the docket of our code and of our office and whatnot. Is that roughly what, what that hearing is about?
Isabel is also available to speak to us, as I understand, and, but you, you are correct. The clarification that she provided and some of the information has, is that a change was made to land use ordinances. Um, typically, you didn't have to come forward, um, if you were disturbing in roughly under a hundred, a thou, a hundred yards of bill. But every time a project happens at University of Maine, that would be over that. There was a request, you changed that ordinance, and it now requires more stringent standards for residents to come forward on. When that was passed, the, the exemption, if you will, for the University of Maine was lost. So, now they're looking at it, and staff brought this to the planning board, recommending it be reverted back to what it was, that they, they have a higher limit that is on the full site plan review. And then Isabel is right there. I'll let her finish off for your.
All right, Isabel, can you talk us through how this came forward, and can you talk us through, um, I, we understand it was a staff recommendation, but does it, I'm particularly interested in the, in the question that Council Kenny had about now how this creates a, a different standard than, than other, other entities that does, that do business in the Town of Orno.
Um, so, as always, I kind of have a long-winded explanation, and I apologize for that, but I just want to make sure that you have sort of all of the background information. So, I noted in my memo that there was an ordinance change, um, a few years ago, and it seems like, and, and frankly, I'm not sure if it was an oversight, there wasn't a clear legislative intent to make the university subject to, um, these standards, other than, you know, it's obviously in our, uh, table of uses. So, the issue here is, um, over the past few months, we have been, uh, staff has been told that the university is intending to ramp up their capital improvements by about a hundred and fifty percent over last year, and has led to my office and Pat's office, uh, receiving four or five inquiries that would be subject to this ordinance just in the last, uh, two or three months or so, one of which has already gone to planning board and was recently approved. Um, they weren't interested in, uh, seeing how an ordinance change shook out for that project. Uh, the remaining projects are sort of on hold pending this conversation. So, in general, the, the theory behind, um, making something go to the planning board is if there are impacts above and beyond what might be, um, you know, palatable to the surrounding community, or to the neighbors specifically. In this case, the university, with all of its other uses, um, typically only goes to the planning board if it's within five hundred feet of essentially the boundaries of the zoning district, so the boundaries of College Ave or Park Street. Um, that is how we treat the university in every other case. Um, there are some much higher impact uses, uh, that may require planning board regardless of where they're located on the campus. But for the vast majority of uses, as you can see in the table that I attached to this document, at the university, they only go to planning board if they're within five hundred feet of, um, of, of those boundaries. The other thing I want to add here is when somebody goes to site plan review with the planning board, another facet of our ordinance is that as soon as you have a site plan on a piece of property and that's been approved, you technically need to return to the planning board if there are any changes to that property. So, this, uh, ordinance change, technically, for the university, if they're putting in a patio, or if they're, um, moving material from one spot on the campus to another, like ripping up pavement and reusing that somewhere else, or what have you, they would always be subject to site plan review, and that becomes a little bit overly burdensome, mainly for staff, rather than the university, um, because they would end up having to come to us every time they wanted to change something with that site as well. So, that's what led us to, to this point, and to myself bringing this to the planning board. Um, I am not, again, not sure if the intent was to actually make the university subject to, to this, because it kind of goes against, um, how we typically regulate the university in section eighteen, one-oh-six, which is the schedule of uses. Um, so I'm not sure if this was just an oversight or what happened here, but in general, it's going to end up being fairly prohibitive for staff, um, and the planning board to process these every time they come forward. Um, so that's why we're here requesting this change.
I have a question, Isabel. Um, how long do we have, if, if the university comes before us with some sort of plan, they want to change a patio, they come to us, just like everybody else would have to do in Orno, do we have an obligation that we have to actually come to that at any time? Because I, I'm interested that, like, there's, there's nobody from the university who, and, and I don't want to put this on the staff, not at all, but I'm interested that the university doesn't seem to send somebody here to talk to us about something that's going to affect them. Like, if we don't have, like, a timeline, we could say, yeah, you can do that in three years when we get to it. I'm just curious why the university is basically like a black box, and we don't, this is not a question, I guess, for you, but I do wonder if we do have, like, a timeline that we have to actually show up the university to do something with.
It's nice of you not to put Isabel on the spot for that, but it is.
Sorry, Isabel, you probably don't know this, but I don't know, do we, do we, like, let's say somebody down the line has, says, um, I'm going to do this, um, project here in town, do, do we, and it's under the same regulation? Do we have an obligation as a town to make it to them within, like, a month?
Yeah, so I think I get what you're trying to ask. So, actually, the clock starts ticking when an application is submitted to my desk. And then we have a certain number of days to review that application for completeness. So, myself and the rest of our staff review team have to review most applications within ten days and provide a determination of whether or not it would be complete for the purposes of planning board review. And then it's kicked up to planning board, and I believe their timeline is they need to act on it within thirty days of receipt, um, and, and act on it, meaning hold a public hearing on the application.
I can see how that would be a huge burden. Thank you.
Is that a piece of ordinance, or is that a state statute?
So, that's a piece of our local ordinance, the administration of the site plan review standards. Um, that would be, sorry, I'm just going to pull it up so I can actually quote it for you. Um, so that would be Article Six, um, site plan review, and that's under, um, review procedures.
Council Marks?
Thanks, Isabel. That was all really helpful and informative. Um, the only question I really have is I just want to clarify, so in reading your materials and then hearing you speak, if I'm understanding this correctly, the university would still be subject to the same process it is now when a project was within five hundred feet of, uh, town land that's not university land, correct? And we're only exempting them for projects that are further than five hundred feet away from town land? Is that accurate?
That would be correct, and that's actually far and away much more, um, strict than any other property in town. Obviously, this is probably the largest property in the community, um, but that's far more strict. Typically, the rest of the, uh, zoning districts only have to come to the planning board if they're within ten feet of a lot line.
Yeah, I, I, that's helpful, because I don't, I don't really feel like we're giving them a particularly unusual exemption then. They're still really being held to the same standard anytime they're close to town property at all. In fact, much further away than other residents. Thank you.
Is that, I mean, but it's five hundred feet as opposed, so if I put a fence in at the back of my yard, it's ten feet away from my neighbor, I gotta cut, right? Well, not, maybe not a fence for a planning board thing, but I mean, if a project, they, there's a five hundred foot buffer into which they don't have to do anything with the town.
It's the reverse.
They do have to.
No, they do have to. Yeah.
It's the reverse, Dan. Within five hundred feet, they do have to do something, and for you, you only have to do. It's the reverse standpoint. Within 500 feet, they do have to do something. And for you, you only have to do it when it's within 10 feet of your, of your yard. Making up the 10, maybe that's not right.
Yep. Okay.
Other than that, they are a black box. They're their own entity, basically, which it sounds like it's what it was. The change from two years ago triggered this and we're trying to correct it if I'm understanding Isabel correctly.
And so.
Which makes sense.
Did the, and did the university ask for this or was it a staff initiated?
Uh, no, I actually want to be clear. I don't know if a, a formal, um, person at the university knows that we are requesting this. There could, I have communicated with some of their consultants, so they are aware. Um, but this was staff driven.
All right. Anybody have anything? I mean, is there any chance we'd have a representative from the university attend a public hearing if we call one, you think, or it'd just be?
Can always ask. I mean, I can ask.
Yeah.
I guess, so what I'm concerned with is I'd love to have a really good relationship with the university, which means that they have to actually talk to us. And I have, um, there is no such like board, like I, I mean, they probably do talk to the staff more than I know. Um, and, and I'd like to hear that, but I'd like to have a really good relationship with the university. And one thing that might be of help to us is if there was like an official, like liaison from the university to the town of Orono, because we provide some services to them. Um, we provide access to the university. We, you know, through, um, through the roads, we provide the fire department, we provide some of the emergency, the police are backup. And so I would like the, to pursue some way of getting to them, them here at the table in a way that's constructive for both us as a council and the university so that we have some sort of, some sort of relationship as a council. That's what I'd like to see. And, and I find it strange that this would really affect the university. It would affect our staff. It would massively affect the university and we're not hearing from the university. This is just my opinion. And so what I'd like to hear is a uni- like every time the university has to move a stone, like that's a huge burden on us. But they're just like, yeah, you take care of it. It sounds like to me. I'd like to hear them come and say, hey, we need this because we don't want to be a burden on you guys. But it sounds like it's the other way around where we're like, oh my God, this is going to be a huge burden on us. And they're like, whatever. You get, you take care of it. Anyways, so that's my opinion and, um, and I would love to have a better relationship with them.
Does it make sense to you, Council Powers, to table the call of a public hearing until the staff can reach out and see if the university wants to weigh in on this or does it matter? I just see Leo shaking his head, but I'm asking Matt.
No, but let's work if, I, I don't want to, I don't want to burden our staff. I really, really don't want to. And I, 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 I would like to move that on, but I do want I'd like to see more interaction from the university with the town if, if we can. I can't force them.
Yep.
Yeah. And I'm shaking my head because I think forcing a requirement on them or forcing them to come in is probably not the best way to nurture a better relationship with them. So just a hunch.
Yes, yes. I, I, I agree, but I can't, I don't know. If we don't hear from them, how, how do we get them at the table?
Yeah, we can, just a second. People are done talking about it. Anybody have any more questions or comments? All right. So before us, we have in order twenty-four, one ninety-three, setting the date of October seventh, twenty twenty-four, five P M. For the public hearing. Um, all those in favor? Yeah, that's unanimous. Yep. Next up is order twenty-four, one ninety-four, order approving requested regional bond referendum for U T C Bangor. Uh, can I have a motion on this?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do we have? Shelley, Shelley, you want to come up and brief us on this one?
If you don't mind, yeah, I'd like to invite, this came at us quickly. It came at the uni- uh, U T C Center in Bangor very quickly. The state gave them a last minute approval for a bond issuance and they've laid out a timeline that this is kind of what needs to happen. They're doing this in thirty-two other communities in their region right now. Uh, there's a lot of questions, but, um, in collaboration and support, when they asked us, Shelley and I said we'd put it on the agenda for Monday and find out what we could do.
Okay.
Shelley Crosby, Town Clerk. Um, so yes, I received notice of this on Wednesday night, just before seven o'clock by my email as well as, um, thirty-five other communities. And this is actually something that is governed and set in statute under title twenty A. Title twenty A is your school administrative law and it sets the election rules around borrowing, um, making appointments, that sort of thing that has to go through a referendum. So under, um, title twenty A, section thirteen fifty-two, it gives the authority to the cooperative board of the regional school units and the regional career and technical colleges to actually call an election for the purpose of bonding or borrowing money. And so they actually can call an election through a, um, warrant which is drafted through the school unit. And then it is served upon the, um, town councils and select boards for counter signature. So that is what this process is. Um, more global, it is a twenty million dollar bond with a one point eight million share going to district four or region four, which is where U T C is, um, housed. On nine twelve, the warrants will be signed by that cooperative board actually calling the election. And it will be delivered to us for counter signature. I believe when Clint and I met and briefed on what this looked like with the timeline, we would be bringing those for counter signature on September twenty-third, not Sept- yes, is it the September twenty-third meeting? Yes. Um, and so once those warrants are signed, then it's just a matter of making sure that we have it in the hopper. So last, um, Thursday night, I stayed late and I worked with our print company not to lose our place in line. Out of over five hundred municipalities in Maine right now, we are on the print and shoot to be number eighty-one or eighty-two. So I certainly did not want to lose my place in line. Um, I did preset the ballot in preparation and we are keeping our place. If everything goes through within you all give blessing, then I'm going to release that tomorrow after the, um, nomination process closes at noon. Because once I lose my place in line, I go to the end and then I may not be able to make my thirty day mark of offering absentees. I will be able to code the machine so that the machine will be able to read both the municipal ballot and the U T C ballot. Um, the U T C ballot cannot be put on our municipal ballot because it is its own entirely separate election and it is not called by the town council. It is called by the cooperative board, which is why they had to have their own, um, ballot. I estimate that the cost of this is going to be between forty-two hundred to forty-eight hundred dollars. I've already discussed that with the director of the cooperative board and they have set monies aside so that they can reimburse the municipality. So that is the nuts and the bolts of what this looks like, even though it landed at the last hour that it possibly could.
And the only last piece is we did get emails back. This is seen as a state funded school project at a ninety-ten shared rate. That's why they're wanting to bring it forward. They have a lot of things. This puts them on their timeline to have them implemented in the summer of twenty-five. So they're there for the next year. And there was one other key piece they did share with us. Oh, and I did speak to our school department. Again, it is a separate entity, but we do send our students there. Roughly fifty students attend U T C in Bangor from Orono.
And I would also add too, that one of the questions that Clint and I came to that we asked the director was shouldn't this have just been handled as a state bond question and should it not have gone on a state ballot? This is a new process and a new approach that they are taking to try to keep this type of funding and bonding at a local level. Um, they are going to be soliciting feedback after this process to see how the municipalities across the state found the process. And it could end up eventually at a state bond question review. But for right now, it's being done as a way to put local control back in the school system and how it organizes.
So it, it sounds like because of your good and late work late last week, that our ballot, our vote in Orono is not going to be anyway interrupted if we approve this order. Um, because you were able to keep our place in line and all the things. Okay.
Yeah. The only way it's going to be interrupted is I'm going to have to do a lot of juggling with ballots because we'll have a lot of ballots to hand out on election day, but organizationally, we'll be able to handle it. Just more paper to move around.
Well, probably won't be a lot of people voting in a presidential election.
No, not at all.
Yeah. All right.
I think there's a state senate race too, but, um, cheap plug.
To strike that.
Cheap plug. Um, I just, I, I wanted to, uh, add some color that I, as a R S U school board member, I served on the U T C board. They always ran a really, really tight ship, um, and the, the place is phenomenal. Greg Miller was the director back then. He's not now, but always, uh, very fiscal responsible. And this sounds like one point eight million dollars across six or seven towns that support that, um, which is, so that's a good, um, it's, it's an unbelievable facility. If people are not familiar with it, definitely check it out.
And do you, it is, our son goes there and computing and he loves it. It's a, it's phenomenal. And, and you said it was going to be a nine to one match in state dollars to.
Yep. Ninety-ten, right?
I don't know how we could pass on a ninety-ten opportunity to fund a project locally. So, uh, whoops, sorry.
Adds on the project.
Yeah. And U T C did apologize for the late notice of this, but it was caught up in the chute of the Department of Education and whether or not they were going to allow the project and the bonding.
And just in response to Dan's comment there, I just, I know I had to step out. I was coughing. I didn't want to interrupt. Um, just to be clear, that ten percent is not being paid by Orono taxpayers. That ten percent is being paid elsewhere. So ninety-ten, but zero for Orono taxpayers, correct?
I don't, no.
Is it ten percent that comes from us if we say yes? That's what I'm trying to get clarity on.
It would not be ten percent from you, but as I read this,
It's.
This is being treated like a state funded construction project.
Exactly.
New approach. So unchartedary and lessons will hopefully be learned to provide back. Uh, where'd she say it? Ninety-ten, ninety-ten. It's a long email. Uh, special by thirty-five towns. Two million the local threshold. School and his partners. I would assume, I'm assuming it's coming back from the tuition they charge. So whether that leads to a tuition increase. But if we send students there, would not U T C have a bill to the sending school district?
The back says with no impact on local educational taxes.
Exactly.
So my understanding is it's not supposed to impact our taxes at all. So.
Now they're getting the other ten.
Educational, maybe that's why it's coming from the, from the, uh, municipal. Because I, it, if the, the ten percent is paid by, my hunch would be if it's on our ballot, it's going to be spread across the whole district somehow. But I, I, why would we even be looking at it if it has?
I think we simply have to authorize it to go on the ballot, Leo, because we control the municipal ballots. I don't think it has to do with the monetary reason why we're being asked. If I, from the long memo that I read through earlier, that's how it read to me, but Shelley, is that your understanding or are you understanding that this does impact Orono taxpayers in some way if they vote yes?
The way that I understood initially, when I spoke to her on the phone, she said that it would not affect any local taxpayer budgets and or raising of taxes.
All the better, but that ten percent is going to come from somewhere. So we'll, we'll stay tuned. All right. So we're going to put this on the ballot.
If you vote to approve, that changes, that would actually give you cause to bring it up for reconsideration. So it wouldn't be a reconsideration without. So I would say you could move forward and it does say on the ballot, no local taxes. So I would assume no local taxes.
Yeah. And the warrants will be ready for your review before they are signed. So I would expect it would be more explained within the warrant, what that structure would actually look like.
Yeah. All right. Well, good. Um, all right. Let's call the question then. All those in favor of putting this on the ballot? It's unanimous. And thank you, Shelley, very much. Thank you for your work. Okay. Um, that closes our action item list of items. And now we're on to council committee reports. Finance and operations committee. Route two council themes and process discussions. We're not to be smooth. Is there anything we need to, we could, we're holding staff for that we should move first before we do this one? We're not, right? We're not gonna. I just see a lot of staff here and I'm wondering if they're all just, any reason why we. Can you, is that get somebody out of here faster if we do that first? All right. So sit tight, everybody. We're going to talk about route two. Yeah. Route two goes east and west, but who knows what direction it'll go in this conversation. Um, so we've had a, um, we've had a lot of work and Clint's done a lot of work. Um, taking a look at this, at the route two opportunity for the town of Orono and we've had, we have a collection of themes that the counselors all, we agreed, it kind of our homework from the last meeting was that we would, uh, send Clint our collection of themes. I don't know Clint, if you printed them off for us or we can just grab them all from our email. If that's the fastest way to do it.
I can actually, and yeah, and if you want, I could have it shared really quickly with Peter to bring up.
Yeah, we could, yeah. Call, I mean, I could, I'm going to call them up on my laptop, but it's hard to. Yeah. Do you have, thanks. So think ahead to what, what's ahead of us. Um, Clint, you are still looking to meet with D O T to get final. You're still looking to get final word from D O T on when decisions are coming and, and things like that, but you've received from us forty-four some odd questions that you've been tracking, you've been running down. And I think have the answers on those been shared? I know we haven't, we didn't put them with our board packet, but have they been shared with all counselors, back to all the counselors in terms of what the answers were?
Uh, no questions and all the answers have not been shared. They're nowhere near complete, but the questions are there. I've shared it with leaders, the chair and vice chair, but I don't believe I shared it with the entire council. I can. It's just we're working on it and there's been so much, we haven't made enough significant progress to make it a shareable document. It's still in work.
So my, my hope is that my, and my suggestion for us in terms of moving forward is to kind of assess the themes and, and give, give the manager a, a strong sense of what our themes are that he can bring back to Sebago. So that we'll have a final report coming back to Sebago that really reflects the, the themes that we have a consensus around as a council, the things we heard. I mean, it sounds like nobody in Orono wants a roundabout, right? Blinda doesn't want it for sure. She shake, you know, nobody wants a roundabout right outside the town office here at the fire station. So that seems like one of the easiest ones. Um, but a collection of themes we bring back to Sebago, we get back to Sebago and over the next two weeks, they bring us back a a final report. And then from there, we have to assess as a council, whether we're ready to move forward with a commitment around the three hundred thousand dollars for the D O T to, to design work. I think, um, as a counselor, I think we have an opportunity to develop consensus around our themes, give that direction to Clint, so he can work with Sebago, bring us back a report. And then consider a resolution at our first meeting in October. Where we'll have a chance to have a, a resolution in front of us that we'll be able to accept the report back from Sebago. Have a chance to, um, consider a outline of process moving forward for how we will, you know, give direction in, and participate in the design process. And make a decision about whether we're ready to fund the three hundred thousand dollars on our end to do the commitment.
Can, can I just ask, I, I thought you had said there was going to be an explanation. I had sent, um, there, the RF, the response to the R F P from Sebago does clearly state following feedback from the public meeting, updates will be made to the plan and a final recommendation will be presented to the public for final approval. To me, that's the stage where we are at now. You, there was talk of thirty thousand dollars to have them fulfill this piece that was part of the response. So I'd like to understand where, how that fell off and why we're now talking in about an addition, why we may be talking about it. I just think us coming up with themes is great, but they, they conducted that meeting with the public. And I feel like that they're the engineers at the table and should, they should have captured those themes. And they should be presenting that back to us versus us kind of stewing about here on our themes and what we heard. It just feels like we are interjecting ourselves into this process that is very much their process. And I'm, would like to understand what happened to task five as it was. And I would like to understand what happened to Task Five as it was presented in their, in their proposal.
Got that one, Clint?
I can. So this has been quite a process.
Welcome to Orono, Clint, and.
Yeah, well, it's been seven, again, a lot of research. I've been sharing as much as I can. And again, Route Two, I will own as your town manager, I think, is a consistent conversation no matter what the season. It's in the heart of your town. It's there. It's always present. So to say that when did Route Two became a topic? I think when Route Two became a topic for discussion of redesigning for pedestrian friendliness happened about seven years ago. You've had a few studies, some, and Sebago was a part of those. You've had a downtown study. I recently shared out some concept drawings from the 2021 era. That was some of the work that was done. To answer your question specifically though, as this came through, it did not have, it happened extremely naturally. It happened with opportunities that council have taken decisions to proceed with. The one we're in was to go forward with a PPI, Planning Project Initiative Collaborative with them, that could lead to what is called a VPI, which is a new village planning initiative, which would really hit to the village central. The federal government is currently funding projects at $30 million each right now and looking for viable projects to come forward. And across Maine and our country right now, there's others like this going on. I know two in the state of Maine besides us personally, you know, with some personal exposure and reading what's going on at the state level. What happened here was is you signed a contract with Sebago to do a process. During that process, and I wasn't here and I didn't get to participate completely, but I did reach out to staff, the state, local planning agencies. You got two meetings, but it is not as written. The first meeting that you came, there was suggestions made that we should not influence them at that meeting. So Sebago was directed by the town of Orono to come forward with an open-minded, no-influence discussion. And they are on and under, they're on budget right now for us to do this. Probably some room to negotiate, but we would go over budget. The number I have that I shared with you was I spoke to them to institute some sort of refined process. That's a high number. I directed them to come back with a high number because I didn't want them to come back low and ask for more another time. So I said, make it as high and give as much room for, for tweaking if we were to adopt a new process. I will say that in my conversations with them and knowing where you are, I have directed them that when, if you guys present themes tonight, they're attempting to make every effort to make sure what they heard and what you say you heard are answered. By answered, I would say that means verbally explained, not a new drawing of your intersection. Not, we should build this, but they will show the Goodridge Roundabout and say, clear community feedback hypothetically, clear community feedback is this should not be a roundabout. We recommend any future phases to reconsider and redo that layout. I shared out and I can share with the rest, that 2021 initiative shows a bridge to, I'm still learning street names. Can I ask Mitch, what's the street name down past Leadbitters? Island Ave, thank you. Without any of those improvements, and it discusses going as far as Kelly Road. Different project, different numbers, different costs. This down says, we're going to go the other way of the bridge too and go all the way out to the Old Town Town Line. So that's how that's kind of happened. We have asked for these. The state is confirming a lot of good questions for me right now, and I hopefully will have a date by the end of the day tomorrow. If not, there will be an email near the end of the day tomorrow saying, how long till I get that date to go over all the information you found? So we're moving them as fast as we can, but they've become very responsive. They were happy to hear where Orono is, but that's kind of why the Sebago agreement in front of you did not deliver. Leo, I agree with you. The second I read it, I'm like, yeah, that's not what we got. But you also got to look, the meeting they did in February really wasn't a step that they were intending to include. So somehow a step got included and another step got removed at equal value.
Not, well, that's, that's a, that's a major problem in my mind because it's very clear. I mean, it, it is just so not what they said they would do. And I think if you ask anybody in town that was at this meeting, I think, I think everyone's just kind of wondering, how can you hold a public meeting and take all kinds of input and then not come back with something? And, and, and I, I don't think, I mean, it's, it's spelled out, I, I don't know who said what, when, and, and who changed the format to a, a meeting where there was nothing discussed. I mean, this says they're going to have a meeting and present one thing and, and then, and they came and presented two things instead. And then, and then they're going to take the feedback from that and come back and present another. And I just think that has to happen for the public's benefit. Otherwise, I don't think anyone comes to a public meeting anymore.
Council Mark, sure.
Um, can I just ask a follow-up question to that? So Leo, thanks for reading that language out exactly. I didn't have it right in front of me, but is it, they are going to give us a report back. Are they planning to come in person or to present that? Or to present it on a screen? Or how are they planning to present that? When we say we will get the next report back from them, I'm on the September 23rd date or maybe now the October date. I'm not clear which date either, but will they come in person to present that second draft of the plan? I think that's part of Leo's question, correct Leo? Is that part of your question, whether they will come in person to present this next stage of their plan?
Yes.
Okay. Do we know? Will they come in person? I mean, they are going to give us another version of the plan. Will they come in person to present that? Do we know that?
Where are you getting that they're going to give us another version? Because I didn't hear him say that.
Well, so the current agreement, and I want to get the exact language, the current agreement does say they have to give us a, a report. Uh, I want to clarify if that says anything about in person or not, so.
So.
Um, so I, okay, I will look that up really quickly, I'm sure.
Just promoted math.
Okay, let me look up really quickly and see if I can find that in the agreement if it talks about in person or not. Mitch, do you know off the? Yeah, I'll have to, so let me see, I'll pull it up real quick to confirm. I don't want to say because I can't remember specifically if it said in person or if just delivered in the sense that it would be.
It says.
Printed and mailed.
Following feedback from the public meeting, updates will be made to the plan and a final recommendation will be presented to the public for final approval. That's what it says in, in the.
So presented. That could be via Zoom and, in my interpretation, it could be in person and I think.
Yeah, I don't care if they're physically here versus Zoom, but.
But I do think that.
And needs to be presented.
And I did think that Clint just said a plan will be presented. Is that not correct? You said there will be.
As long as we make the clarification is I do not think there should be expectations of new concept drawings.
Right, no new drawings.
A final report and plan on how to proceed.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I think there are expectations from this response that it will be, it will be a plan.
If you wanted more concepts, that's the part of this where I asked them for additional, could we do them? And, and I, and clarified, we could get those, and that's where I'm laying out what a process of like that could look like. And we discussed at last, the last council meeting.
The next sentence is to help communicate the intended improvements, Sebago will rely on both 2D conceptual plans and 3D visualizations, which have proved to be effective in many communities and sharing the ultimate vision for the corridor.
Right, so.
Really stated right there.
We've heard that, yeah, but Leo, we've heard that prior staff made a decision to, staff is not here anymore, made a decision to change that approach after the, after the contract was in place and.
Is that in writing?
What's that?
Is that in writing? I mean, that's.
I could say that I could confirm.
Fundamental to this whole process. I think this is so fundamental though.
Yeah.
Hundred percent agree, Leo, that it's very fundamental that we get them. I'm not clear yet whether we're going to be able to get them without an additional cost, but it does sound that without additional cost, we will get a plan back with recommendations. What it will not have is new concept designs and new drawings. Is that what you're understanding also? Is that, I mean, I just want to be clear that we're all understanding the same thing, whether we like it or we don't is a second thing. But are we all under, is that what we think is going to happen?
What Clint said verbally explained, so I don't know what, if they're going to verbally tell us something or, I mean.
In writing, words.
I thought there'd be a written report.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so that's, and then we're taking.
Can I just ask one quick question? What, what, how much has been paid? How much have we paid and what's this current value of the contract that's in place? Because I, I didn't see that, so I have no idea what that is.
Fifty-fifty, uh, up to sixty-five, uh, for a total of 130,000, half by the town, half by the state. Current paid to date, I don't have that right here in front of me. I was looking it up. It is still underpaid. There's still a balance remaining. They are under budget at this point.
So 130, you said?
Hundred and sixty-five, sixty-five, hundred and thirty, fifty percent.
All right, so and you have it, you have it from your conversations that it was changed in your conversations with staff that it's changed.
And the only piece of information I have in conversations with Sebago is so long as they don't finish the phase they're in right now, if we were to extend the contract or amend it, this would never be presented to the state of Maine for their 50% share. So because it's, the state will not pay its half until the project is closed in their minds. We could continue with more projects in a separate agreement, but again, in order to writ that money in, and again, only 65,000, depending on your perspective, that is a big or a small number, but we are trying to get the project to a closure point, not in the sense that it's closed for all discussion, closed as we can submit the 130,000 current phase project for reimbursement.
Yeah.
So that would be, and I don't want you to not know that and think that, okay, well, we're, until we, until we say this is good, we're moving on to another report, which would probably be a hundred percent local funded.
So we can't get, I mean, the decision points for us are, one, the themes that we want to present that'll, that'll inform this final written report. Two, we have a decision to make as to whether we want to finance the costs of additional, you know, drawings, concepts, 2D, 3D, whatever D, however many Ds they need to be. And then ultimately, if we're ready to commit $300,000 to design, our share of the design, those feel like the three, the three decisions that we have to make as a council. And I think tonight, I think those other two decisions are things we're not gonna, we're not going to make any progress on the concept until I, I'm not going to be interested in entertaining, as one counselor, discussion on spending $30,000 for more concept drawings until we get the final report back. I'm disinclined to want to, you know, I think a strongly worded report communicated to the community will, will show the community that they were heard. So everyone who showed up at our meeting and said, we don't want a roundabout between Old Town and Orono, if that's the one that gets, if that's one of the themes that gets in, but the, the Goodridge Roundabout, the, you know, the main, the physical barriers on bike lanes, the, you know, not driving commuter traffic through residential neighborhoods, you know, those kinds of, if we get five bullet point, five clear themes coming out of the, in writing, and we can say back to the people of Orono, there will be no roundabout at Good, at Goodridge. There will be no prevent left lane, which is the left lane one on Pine Street, you know, goes right in, right out on Pine Street. If we can get those five things, articulate those back to the community, I don't know that they need to see drawings to show that, but.
I would very much like us to move into the themes discussion because I think that's what we committed to the community that we would do tonight and the other decisions were not to be till later in the month. So I would love to have us engage in this themes discussion fully at this point, if others are amenable.
All right, can we start with this one list right in front of us? Is that, everybody okay with this? So number one is, and this is going to be messy. We're not going to take motions and we're not going to table anything. No right in, no right out at Pine. Is that a top fiver for everybody? Yeah.
I had a suggestion that actually some of these no things just be combined into one bullet point. That is, here are the three or four do nots. Because a lot of them are fairly simple and straightforward. So I say yes to this one, but I think I'd like to see them combined into a list of, you know, one point is, here are the three absolute do nots we heard.
Does that mean we have eight themes or five?
I mean, I think we just need to say if everyone agrees to it at this point, and then we move forward with how many themes we end up with and whether we need to reduce.
All right, so one theme is no right in, no right out. Do not include a right in, right out at Pine Street.
Right is going to mean you said yes.
Okay, anybody? We'll go by unanimous consent unless people, and then talk about things you don't agree on. Do not eliminate a right turn at lane at Bennet and Forest. I don't know if that was a theme for me in terms of what I heard. I mean, I think just the theme to be improvements in traffic flow at Bennett and Forest, and I don't know if any one element is the right one or the wrong one. Could we, could we get our arms around improving improvements to the traffic flow at Bennett and Forest without explicitly saying eliminate, do not eliminate the right turn?
I heard it from quite a few people in that neighborhood though, that if that right lane went away, it was a major problem and they were envisioning backups three times as long.
Yeah.
But I, I actually agree with Dan's concept though, is that, and, and again, this is why this feels a little bit like an exercise in futility because we're sitting here, not the traffic engineers, but yet what the traffic engineers, I'm not convinced really hit the nail on the head by any stretch. But I, I agree with, don't get rid of that slip lane. But the bigger issue is, I would love to, we need to, it would be great if we could see some traffic improvements there. So if that means they got rid of the slip lane because they did something else, I, I don't know that. So I, I think I'm in line with what Dan is saying. That's, I think people want that slip lane. But if there's, but ultimately people want better traffic movement there, and I don't, I don't think we've seen that from anything that I know of, but maybe I'm wrong.
All right.
So can that be worded to say something more like, don't get rid of it unless there is a solution that actually makes traffic flow even better than that? Because that's people's concern, is that it not back up further?
Very broadly enhance can make traffic flow better, I, I, again.
The problem is.
Engineers can improve traffic, I'm hearing.
Yeah, improve traffic flow at.
At Downs, Bennett and Forest.
I have concerns about that because I think that they've already presented plans that improve the traffic flow and nobody liked them.
Yeah.
The plans that were presented was a roundabout there. So if we just write improved traffic flow, that sounds like give us a roundabout, which everybody said they didn't want. So. No, not there, but the, in general.
So we're just talking, we're talking about there, so I think let's not.
I'm, I'm fine with improve. It's fine, but I just, I'd be concerned that they're aware that, you know, getting rid of that is a specific worry for people.
I wonder if, instead of, instead of going through all of the items that all of us listed and seeing whether, whether we agree, whether we might just, I mean, I, I had time to look at all of this after also having my thoughts. I don't know if everybody else has, but if we could just say out loud the things that we think are top line recommendations we don't want in here, we see if we're all in agreement about it, we put that in a smaller list. And if anything got missed that one of us really cared about, that, that we thought the community cared about, we can, we can discuss that. But I'm just, in the interest of time and the interest of efficiency of this process, I don't know if there's a better way to do this.
I think we're going to get through them pretty fast if we get, if we keep going, the way we're doing, but I.
All right.
Yep. All right, so Clint, you got that on number two, improve traffic flow at Bennett and for, Bennett and Forest? Without a specific direction on that?
Or with a note about the slip lane, that that's a concern of losing it?
All right, you could throw, yeah, this is why we don't, yeah, I know, I got it. All right, we need a physical barrier between bike lanes and car lanes. That's a, a big one for me. Is anyone else?
Saw that a lot, saw that a lot.
Yeah.
I saw that a lot too. I just, I, I wonder about plowing, et cetera. I mean, I don't, so I guess that one. Yeah.
I.
Something.
I agree. I saw, we saw it a lot, but I, I think it's, I think there are probably real issues that don't make it a, if we're in Florida, probably no problem, but I, I feel like there's probably major issues. If they could come up with something, I think we talked about the rumble strip kind of thing or the, or, yeah, rumble strip. But I don't, I don't want to put a hard line that we have to have physical barriers either because I.
I agree with you. Yeah, maybe not a hard line saying this is, i- is there a way that this works without totally reworking the entire thing?
I don't think I see any of these as a hard line, just to be clear. I see it as us saying, this is our list of things we would like to have in a plan, and then they're going to look at the list and come back and say, this one can't be done unless, you know, there's not enough width. I mean, I'm not assuming we get everything we ask for. I assume this is us asking for what we actually would like if it's possible. So I don't want to edit ourselves down with us assuming that things aren't possible before we even ask them to see if it can be done, but that's me.
That's good language.
Good point.
We prefer a physical barrier between bike lanes and car lanes if possible.
It's a good point, Sarah, thank you.
Yeah.
If you wanted to make it even more nebulous, you could put protected, physical slash protected, but that's all right, no worries.
Yeah, throw it, throw a bone to Council Powers.
On number four, the roundabout since there are time being too dangerous for children, I, I mean, the things that I, I mean, I did see that as a general theme, but as far as specifics on the plan, I saw one, the roundabout that was suggested here. I mean, it seems just like nobody wants this one. And then the other one that people seemed really opposed to was all the way on the other side, uh, on the Old Town side. Those two seem to be the ones that people were really concerned about. Uh, yes.
It, it was Belinda, but she was very concerned, so it made a big difference to me.
Goodrich and what was the second roundabout?
The one at the Old Town Orono line out by.
Whoever that furthest one is.
Although I appreciated the thoughts about that, I don't feel like we heard about the other one from very many people at all.
I, I heard.
Two people and the Goodridge one we heard about from dozens, so I'm not sure they're in the same category.
I, I. One was definitely more.
I've talked to a number of people since in like the college neighborhood, like, like the university circle and everything. And it's a mixed bag as to whether people want, some people want a roundabout at university and Maine. And some people are more just, I mean, college, sorry, college and, and Main Street. And other people are kind of ambivalent or, um, but that one is not like a hard no.
And I agree with you, Sarah, proportionally. I mean, I'm not putting them on the same level. It's just the, the two roundabouts I heard problems with.
Is it more of the forced right issue to the one that was on the other town line?
Felt like it.
Yeah.
But.
I'm just gonna say again.
People just overall didn't like the number of roundabouts.
We don't want to set a world record for roundies.
Yeah.
I, I don't think we really, yeah, I would agree with the end that I don't think we really heard enough about any other roundabout to give a specific opinion. Just that in general, not so many roundabouts. Nobody really was in favor of most of them, really.
Yeah. I mean, and sort of part of where some of the roundabouts were set seemed to be wrapped up in. A related issue, which was diverting or rerouting, uh, traffic onto side streets. As I say, well, the Pine Street one we've, we've discussed, um, but I think, and that's where the no right and right out at Pine, specifically people were very opposed to. But also in general, the, um, sort of the, the concept of anywhere sort of routing traffic in those sideways. I think people were not a fan of. I don't know if other people agree if that's what they were reading.
I, maybe you could get away to Clint with this one, you know, you could say the roundabout at Goodridge are strongly opposed. And. And the number of, you know, maybe the number of roundabouts. Everywhere was a concern or that, but it was clear that, yeah, it was clear that the Goodridge one was, and we heard from the, the school board even weighed in on that one. So they were nice about it, but.
Is there a, oh, okay. No, go ahead.
All right. Number five, I, the bridge bottleneck and safety issues should be dealt with too. I, Matt had a, I don't know if we, these aren't named, but I'm just gonna say it. Matt has.
I have my fantasy. I can tell you guys real quick what my fantasy is.
We're dying to hear your fantasy.
All right, but I, there's two ways.
After seven o'clock, you can tell us.
There's two ways we can deal with safety in downtown. There isn't enough room necessarily to, to have protected bike lanes through downtown without necessarily. Just like at that Goodridge, it's hard. Um, so one way is to take pedestrian traffic away from that particular road. We still want them to come downtown. And so in my fantasy world, there would be a pedestrian bridge from, um, Webster Park over to the park that has the little stone on the other side. And route, um, um, bicycles up Summer Street to the back of, uh, and then we wouldn't have as many people cycling this way. Yeah. That's my fantasy.
I think it's, I think it's a.
And it would, it would really.
I, good, sir.
I guess what I want to say on this one is that I, I have no idea what actual different bridge projects would cost. All we've been told so far is that they're crazy, too much expensive, but I have no idea what crazy, too much expensive is. Nor did we get told any cost figures, like if there was a pedestrian walkway built that overhung the existing bridge, what does that cost? I, I really do want a strong push to say, give us some data on making the bridge better. Because the bridge is a really big problem area in our town. And honestly, we had a plan in 2021, which dealt only with adding crosswalks basically from the center of town up toward Kelly Road. And making ADA compliance sidewalks and not much else. That cost something like three million. I don't know. From talking to people on the previous planning back in 2018. And I would honestly like to know if we did just that for three million and put 27 million into fixing the bridge, what the heck could we do? So for me, I want to know some data on what bridge solutions would cost and not just laugh about them. And so we have something. I'm not, I mean, the laughter was fine and fun, but I think it's important to push back and say, this is a major issue in our town. Like what would it actually take to solve it? And then be able to make, you know, decisions as a council about what the priorities are. If our priorities are roundabouts, that's great. But if they're expensive and we don't want them, I want to know what the bridge solutions cost and what the most creative bridge solution would be.
Yeah.
That's me.
I think, I think this is an opportunity to explore an alternative to the current bridge, you know, crossing that we have from the down, from, you know, the downtown onto, onto the island. And whether it's Matt's idea or something to do with the existing bridge, and then we have to come back as a council and we have to resource that. In, you know, if it can't be part of the DOT design, we have to re, make commitment to resource, the council has to decide this one to resource. The manager's office or public works to, to, you know, lead some kind of review of what that would take and bring us back a proposal. Cause we're not gonna get, you know, Clinton's Google account is not gonna be able to figure out what, what the cost of that is gonna be. So we're gonna have to, if we want to pursue it and I, I want to pursue it. I mean, it's, the bridge is not, you know, the bridge is not a, a good, safe experience for people crossing the river. As it is now, and I'm definitely interested in exploring it. I don't think we can tell DOT that they have to necessarily do it, but let's explore it as a town, come up and figure, and then hey, you know, like we're doing with the HR consultant. Resource you, your office to do, Clint's office to do it. I'm, I'm definitely in favor of that.
My only comment on the like pedestrian bridge, if there was a town in Maine to have one put in because of safety issues with a main street. That we could leverage, um, the state to, to back, this is the town. We have all of these pedestrians coming from, from the university. We have an issue with the size of the road going right through downtown. If it's not here, it won't be anywhere in Maine. Without, without being able to like, talk to the state about this, because this is part of the, of the route to safety. This is part of the, of the route to issues that we have here. So it's not like I'm just like pulling it out of my backend.
Yeah, good.
I also just wanted to add that, I just wanted to add that we're not asking MDOT to do anything at this point. We're paying SABAGO to draw us up concept design. So, you know, I know MDOT gets to decide what they want to do and what they don't want to fund. But right now we're just talking about what we're asking SABAGO to give us information on.
Yeah.
I agree, I do, I, I agree that, you know, this whole thing's about pedestrian safety. And, and so the bridge, everyone thinks is, is a part of that. And I think if you ask nine out of 10 people, they'd say, yeah, I don't, we don't need four roundabouts, but we could use that. So I, that seems like it should be, I'm not that interested in running off and exploring this and paying for this and doing this on our own. But I am really interested to hear how this could be incorporated into what they're trying to accomplish. Because again, from where I sit, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing what the value we're getting out of this from a traffic or a safe pedestrian safety perspective. So that one, and, and I do think we have to be realistic too about that bridge. We keep talking about it being unsafe. I, I don't think there's any reports of any accidents on it. So we, we do need to be based in data when we talk about how unsafe it is. The, the sidewalk is raised, pedestrians are plenty safe. The, I think the bike, bike lane narrows to a foot and a half or two feet or whatever. But, you know, if, if.
Yeah.
There, there's maybe alternatives there too. Bikes are on the right, walkers are on the left. We've got crosswalks. So, um, I think it's worth consideration. I'm not looking to go explore a new project on our own personally. My one, one person's opinion, but I think they should incorporate and it's, I think it was a missed, kind of a missed opportunity to have not come back with. Something about it.
So we could, that could be a theme, explore the, you know, pedestrian and bike routes across the river. I like it.
Yep.
Yeah. All right, um. Parking is tougher at this stage of the game, right? And then I don't know, we're at five now, right? So we've got five already.
Yep. It's six.
What's that?
They're on six.
I know we're on six, but we've got five that are all greened up, right?
Oh yeah. Sorry. Yes. I thought you, yeah.
I don't know that we only have to.
Who was the first list? Just out of curiosity.
It's Sarah's list.
I assumed it was Dana.
Now, mine's the one that misspelled Goodridge, spelled good U instead of Goodridge.
I just want to say, I don't think we have to stick to five. It's our list. We can put what we want. I wouldn't want to see us get over 10 or 12, but we get to decide how many. And on this one, I just want to say that although I agree that parking may be in some ways a later discussion. After we had the community meeting, we had a lot of people write in and start to talk to us about the parking right in the center of town. Not on the whole part of Main Street, but there are a lot of people with mobility issues and older folks who rely on some place to park to get in and out of events. At the church. And to me, it's crucial that we have some discussion about how to get that. Because if that means we talk to the, they have to talk to the church about giving us more right of way, then I would want those conversations to start. So again, it's, I just want to see a plan for how do we get spaces? And then we get to decide, is that something we want to pursue or we don't? But I want a plan for how to get some spaces because I don't think it's safe otherwise for older folks trying to get the places they need to get.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Um, I, taking all the parking out of downtown or making it be shared with the bike lane is not a good solution in my mind. Maybe it's for that section, bike lanes on one side, or I, I don't know, but there has to be a better solution because.
Okay.
There are a lot of seniors in that area.
Clint's capturing this and is synthesizing this in his town manager expertise.
I'd also just point out that the stone man, is it the stone manor? If that is a viable business in the future, if it is a business, there's no parking there unless you are on the street between, uh, Westwood and downtown. And so it's just another issue that people have brought up to me about, um, the parking just between there.
All right. Good stuff. All right. And we don't have to have just five. Top remarks?
I'm just not sure what you mean by existing parking spaces as you're writing up there.
You have a lot of existing parking spaces, not just in front of the church, but also Mill Street that you've heard feedback on that could keep those. Because they, parallel parking there would reduce spaces. So I kind of encapsulated both of those. Is that maximizing and maintaining the existing spaces is important in the final design.
I guess I, I, for me, that doesn't reflect what I'm trying to say. I'm trying to specifically say we have a safety issue around that area on Main Street. I know other people are concerned about losing six parking spaces and I, we could debate parallel versus not. But for me, that's a very different issue that it's a safety issue to me for people who are older or have mobility issues. Who are not able to access things they need to access, whereas there's plenty of other parking down on Mill Street. So I, I guess I just need to say for me, this is a very specific issue to a very small area on Main Street.
So we're just talking about in front of the church or by the church?
Really particularly concerned about that.
That, that to me, that, I mean, I hear you and I, I get it, I guess, but that if we're, we probably need to be careful about carve outs for specific. Addresses too, in our, in our response. I think our response has to be broader than that, than just a carve out for a particular business. You know, if Alpenglow were still there, maybe it'd be the same for them or, or the stone church across the street or, so I don't think we can, I don't think we can identify like one entity that has it.
I don't think it has to be an entity, but I do think we have to be aware of disabled parking. And there is no, I mean, if someone had a disability at that point and needed to get to anything there, how would they do it?
E, that's a hazard of where that church is located, I think, to some degree. I, I don't know. I mean, that's.
Yeah, I think that's fine. That's why I said, talk to the church, because my feeling is they need to give a bigger right of way. If the parking spaces need to be there is my suggestion.
And I, I would, I would add that I think we heard from all, all businesses that there's, there's no appetite for the parallel parking. That's why, for me, that's a, that's a hard, no, no, no hard lines, but I mean, that's a, that deserves its own point in my, in my view.
All right, Clint, how are you gonna catch this?
Can we just make it two different parking issues? Say two different parking issues on number six. Number one, people don't like the idea of parallel parking. And number two, we're concerned about disabled parking on that area of Main Street. Which is still zoned, right Mitch? For business use. So whether we have businesses there now or not, Alpenglow business, that area is still zoned. Other businesses could move in there. Okay.
All right. So we got two parking pieces coming in. On page two, if we're ready to go to page two, I think, no, we get several here. All right. Things I would like to get back from SABAGO responses because this seems public. Number one. Oh, those are yours? Okay.
That's all mine and it's already covered by what we're doing. They were asking them to give us a plan.
All right. Response number two from a counselor, counsel number two.
I'll own this one and I can summarize it very easily since we've already talked about it.
What's that?
Uh, since we've already talked about it, uh, number one, limit the amount of property taken. This is covers the roundabout discussion we had since most of the property will be, um, roundabout driven. Um, and then the other item that wasn't mentioned up top is just making sure that we move traffic through the Westwood and Maine. During school drop off times. That's terrible.
Can we hammer that one, Clint, and see what we can do about smart traffic signaling or something like that? Change state laws if we have to about if we need, you know.
And that has bigger, that has bigger possibilities in theory. In the sense that smart signaling may address the slip lane at Forest and Bennet to some degree. I don't know. I'm not a traffic engineer, but.
Almost exactly. Yeah. Almost transformational.
Not every problem can be solved with, or should be solved with the roundabout, but there's gotta be another way.
All right. I work from home and don't leave the house until nine. It's kind of mine. But do I ride my bike? All right. Pedestrian bike safety, you're still for that? Council bigger? Good. All right. Response number three, feel free to own it if you want to. Better pedestrian safety and cycling. We got that covered. Subjected bike lanes, more flashy light crossings and raised crosswalks.
Can we clarify? And I think the raised crosswalk part's important because I couldn't tell from the SABAGO designs whether there were raised crosswalks. There were flashing lights and buttons, but I could not tell if the crosswalks were raised. Could anyone else tell?
I couldn't tell. I've got an opinion on raised crosswalk, but.
Bill shaking his head. No. Yeah. Yeah. And there are other things you can do around a crosswalk that aren't necessarily a raised crosswalk, but there are things you can do to like, bring the curb out more. It kind of, you know what I mean? They do it. It's all, it's very European. Um, but they, they have.
So are roundabouts.
In sanctuary spaces in the middle of the road where people can hang out if they need to. So.
I felt like we heard from a lot of the public that they like the raised crosswalks and these other things like curb cutouts. So I think we should have a point in there that says something about.
Pedestrian infrastructure.
Explore raised crosswalks, curb cutouts. We are not clear if they're in the design now. So I'd like to see them if they're possible and allowed. Why would we not want them? They slow down traffic too.
I've heard the exact opposite about raised crosswalks. People don't like them, um, from a, uh, driving standpoint. From a public safety standpoint. So I like Dan's idea. There's gotta be, there, there are different ways I would imagine raised crosswalks.
Let's look at pedestrian infrastructure. Does that, Clint, does that catch it?
We confirmed race, uh, possible at roundabouts. Aren't we getting rid of the roundabouts? What are we?
All right. Good work, Clint. This is, I know this is incredibly hard for you, so it's hard for me just thinking it. Okay. Bike safety, huge problem with Bennet. Okay, we've got that. Crosswalks at Kelly and Westwood. Between Kelly and Westwood, I think that's kind of cut, captured already, right? Number D here.
Kelly and Westwood?
More crosswalks between Kelly and Westwood for OBC, Spencer, Dan and Jamie have to cross the street to go down to OBC. Nobody stops.
Aren't those already in the plan they brought us?
Yeah, they're in the.
I think they're all there already.
Yeah. All right.
It's already there.
Yeah.
Good bullet. It's under the traffic movement. So.
Okay. All right. We're not, we're still not taking a turn at Pine Street. Uh, if we made a position bridge from Westwood. This is Matt. This one's yours, right? This is good. Easy. It's gonna be a six to one vote on that someday. I can see it. Placemaking. All right. This one's mine. Cause it's, you know, placemaking. Um, I think so. All right. I can live, I can live without the placemaking. Uh, no roundy at Good, Goodridge. No detouring traffic through residential neighborhoods. Does that covered by the Pine Street stuff? That is right.
Yeah, I think so. Be worth maybe making just that explicit as a principle.
And then, um. I had an articulated roadmap. I had an articulated roadmap for decision making, which I think is a process that we're going to approve. Yeah, we're going to consider as part of our resolution anyway, so.
Yeah, my question on that to you, Dan, is that more to Sebago or more to us as a council? Yeah, okay.
I think.
None of those are in.
Apparently not. It's fancy being the town council chair, right? You sit in the middle of the table and, yeah, they're already in.
I had one question on one of yours, Dan, actually.
Yep.
But um, where you talked about the, the first one that you said you were skipping over about the um, I'm not getting the language right, but anyway, um, placemaking and all of that. I thought that tied in a little bit to a question I had about the beautification because they said beautification was one of their original goals in the plan. And what I thought we heard from the public, reading your comment, made me think, Dan. Because what I mostly heard from the public was that from Kelly Road to the center of town, people already feel like things are beautiful enough. We have nice grass, we have trees, it's nice. I do feel like the center of town, we heard comments about there's an awful lot of pavement, right in the center of town and no green anything kind of between us and, you know, down to UCU. So I wondered if we wanted to say something about focus those beautification efforts in this area of town. Where people identified that it's sort of an asphalt, you know, our mini asphalt jungle here. Because I do think they had some ideas for beautification here that I think are important and the ones further out, people mostly did not seem to care one way or the other, and in some ways didn't want, so.
I agree.
Alright, so placemaking in the most important place. Is that right in the center of town?
It, where that's two lanes both ways or different, you know, it just seems like that's, I, I didn't, I don't remember what those ideas were, but it seems like that's, we're kind of, we're restricted by buildings there and.
They had some ideas about like green space, I think around where the bus stop is and the Irving Station. I'm personally always interested in green space on the other side from us where there's a parking lot that isn't much utilized. I know we don't own it, someone else owns it, but who knows if they'd be willing to sell us a part that would be interesting beautification space. I would just like to say focus in this area is what we seem to get from the community. Like this is the area where the beautification seems to be missing, but maybe that's just me.
Are we okay with that being a theme?
Sure.
Okay. Alright, this gets easier the later it gets.
So I did, I, my, I thought we're, I didn't submit new ones because I still had submitted the other ones, but I, I, I am really interested to hear the, the, what's gonna happen to trees in some way, shape or form here. I, I was, a community member has asked me and I, I think it's, I think, I understand they probably don't know, they're not gonna know for sure, but I do think they would have some ideas before we spend three million dollars on engineering to say, you know, there's, we're probably gonna lose somewhere in the neighborhood of A to B or, you know, I, I, I really would like to, because that, to me, I think a lot of people would have feelings about if we, because that really changes the, the whole character of the town. If we were to do away with, say, thirty-five trees and, and approximately, and I'm, this is just not a real number, completely throwing it out versus we're gonna lose probably five or six trees.
So we're a tree city, right? Or no, it's a tree, and you know, may, is there a theme where we could say, you know, we value our status as a tree city? Cause I don't know that we're gonna get, you know, I don't think anybody's gonna be able to put like a ribbon around. And I know you're not asking for that. But it's, it's gonna be very hard to.
You do?
What's that?
How do you know that?
Yeah. Maybe you're not, no, you can, yeah.
Leo, could that be part of, I don't know, did you type something about beautification Clint that we could see on the screen? Just because, whichever we're calling it, but I, I guess I'm just saying, I think that's part of the placemaking part, Leo, is to say in the part between Kelly Road and, I don't know, Goodridge or Westwood or whatever it is. People's main concern for beautification and placemaking is to keep the trees, actually, rather than to give us little green median strips, right? That's a major concern that people had. I don't think it's just you. So anyway, I don't know, maybe that's part of that same bullet point that talks about focusing in this area for improvements and in that area. Focusing on.
The natural.
Contain existing trees and the natural beauty that's already there. I don't know. Just a thought.
I like that.
That sounds good.
Okay. Clint, now a few?
Who's going three different ways? I don't know. How do you want it worded?
So the placemaking in town, in town with elements, you know, planned elements and placemaking outside of town by maintaining a further away from the village by maintaining the existing tree scapes. Are they tree scapes? Megan, are they tree scapes?
Wrong Megan. Megan has the tree scamper.
I know, I know, but. Are they called, is it tree scapes what we have now on Main Street? I don't, you don't, it doesn't matter. Don't, don't, please don't. I ask you, I ask you to do hard things sometimes from, through the manager and, yeah. I can Google it as fast as you can, probably faster actually. Alright. Good, thanks. I think that gets it done. What did we get? We get these twelve of them?
I think, well, I think you're ten with two that have subparts, little ones, not big.
Can you send us that back tomorrow and then work with Sebago to get us a final report?
Yeah.
Sure Mitch.
So like, I think about, I'm not saying that it would answer. Part of the reason why they tried to firm that up for a long, long walk across that whole thing. But if I made it wider, the traffic flow, and I'm not saying this is right or wrong answer, but is that something that you should, you guys should say, hey, if you really want to keep these things in mind for making decisions, sometimes around the law, make more, make more sense because of the fact it's actually safer than the alternative that's there for the dashboard or for, that's all I can be. But put something on that and say, put all these things here, but in times they're putting.
I, yeah, can I, I've been, I, all along, I've kind of been suggesting that. I, I'm not looking for yes, no, yes, you know, okay, okay, or, or if, but if, I think they just have to explain it. If, that, that's what I'm looking for. If they say, we can't do anything else here because of, this is what it means. I, I think I'm looking for that level of response. If, if there is those kinds of conflicts, uh, that's personally my, my feedback on it.
I agree with Leo. I, I would say, I, I feel like what I'm looking for when, when there's a conflict is for them to say, we heard you say this and this, and at this particular intersection, we can't accomplish them both. So here's one that accomplishes A and here's one that accomplishes B. And you guys are gonna have to decide because we can't come up with a solution that does them both. That's what I'd like to see.
I'd like a little, like, here's A and here's B. Here's why we think A is the best or here's why, I think, I would like that level of input as well.
I would love to hear what they think, but I'd also like to see them both and not just be told one option. I don't think they should try to make a guess when we've given them ten and haven't prioritized them, so. I think it's great. Thanks. Great question Mitch. Um, I just had one other question apart from our top list going into next meeting. Is there a place for us to ask for things that we do want coming into the next discussion beyond Sebago's report back to us? If there's stuff that we want from town staff, do we have time to ask for those things or not?
Yeah, well, it's, can we talk about sequencing and then talk about that? So again, I think we, we did our work tonight on the themes. Clint got them down and he's gonna send them off to Sebago very first thing in the morning. Um, and talk about bringing us a final report on the twenty-third. My, my vision or my aspiration is that on the twenty-third, you know, we get the report, we consider the report and we have an order in front of us accepting the report from Sebago. Then, once we have that discussion, my as, my aspiration from a sequencing standpoint is that we talk about a resolution that'll come before us at our first meeting in October, which is October seventh. And that resolution, and I'll, I'll hand around my first pass on it tonight. Um, or I'll email it to you in the morning if you prefer, uh, blind copy to everybody because I know we can't edit these things collectively as a council outside of a public meeting. But um, is a resolution supporting a Route Two Community Direction and Design Project? That resolution would acknowledge kind of the things that we've done so far. The work that, you know, this hundred, did we get the sewer pipe thing on our, we didn't get that, we're not even there yet, right? Oh my gosh. Um, what's that?
That's just.
Alright, yeah. As an aside, there's still, it's still time to get on the ballot to be as town councillor between now and noon time tomorrow. If anybody wants to be with us until eight o'clock on Mondays. Um, so my aspiration is a resolution that we discuss, um, except, you take the Sebago report, accept, act on it, accept it as, you know, we've accepted it, we've received it. It's something we can communicate out to the community and say, you know, these themes were expressed during the, during the hearing on the Route Two project. This is, we've, we've gotten this final report, we're accepting it. It's gonna be the starting point for our discussions with the main DOT. And then the resolution acknowledges that Clint has a um, you know, that Clint's put together a project, a process for us to engage citizens in a focus group and we can have a right of way working group for the Route Two butters and moves us forward and commits us to the three hundred thousand dollars for the design. And that would be something I'd envision us voting on, on October seventh.
So I have an ask that we do not have an order on the night that we're receiving this thing for the first time and no public is gonna have seen it for the first time. No public's gonna be able to see it before we, I mean, I, I, I would ask that we do not do that in the same meeting.
I agree.
Alright, fine. Can we, can we accept the order? Could we, why don't we accept, we, we get the report on the twenty-third and then we have it come to our meeting on the seventh. Where we first, you know, order number twenty-four, one, order twenty-four, two, zero, zero is accept the Sebago report. And then order two, zero, zero, one is the resolution endorsing the, or, you know, considering a resolution supporting a Route Two Community Direction and Design Project.
And Dan, are you asking us to vote for the three hundred thousand in that resolution? Or are you asking us to put the three hundred thousand into a reserve fund that we would vote on after we see any enhanced concept we decide we might need? If that were to happen, which we may not need one because Sebago may do such a fabulous job.
Yeah.
But I'm curious how that happens if we're not happy with the plan at that point. What happens then?
Um, I think you're opposed to the three hundred thousand dollars at that point. I, I think we just vote on the, whether we do the three hundred thousand and if you're, if you're an I, you vote for it. If you're an A, you vote against it and that's the will of the council and that's the direction the town, the town manager needs to move forward or not.
Fine by me. Just wanted clarity. Thank you.
Thanks.
I have one clarification.
Sure.
Agenda item for the twenty-third.
Yeah.
Will have an order to accept the report from or?
Nah, we'll just, we'll have an informational piece on, because Leo's getting his way again. No, I think it's a really good suggestion. No, and when Leo and Rob, when Rob like instantly, you know, agreed to Leo, that kind of, I read the room, right?
No, do you want though, then the second part was the bigger question. Do you want a sample order that would be brought back on the seventh? That would show you what it may look like, so that's not a surprise or is that okay? And you'll come to some sort of consensus on the twenty-third that'll make it clear what you think for the seventh.
Personally, I'd like to just have this thing and see what it is and not have a predefined like, okay, now we gotta, we gotta jump to this next thing. I just, because, I mean, I, I'm really hopeful and maybe I'm, and maybe everyone else is totally content and it's not gonna happen, but I really wish they would follow their RFP and actually give us something. But if that doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. But I think it's a harder, it's gonna be a harder sell if, if it's not, it certainly is for me.
And you are, I mean, that's, if that's something you really want, I mean, we can absolutely discuss and you can bring it forward as a, I mean, we really opened up the process, I think, so that if you think it's something we, I know you don't want to spend money on, I'm, I'm sure you don't want to spend money on it. But if we, if you think we really need it and want to spend money on it, we can have that discussion too as a council.
Can someone clarify for me what accepting the report means? Does it mean like we're endorsing it and saying MDOT, this is the report we want you to move forward with or what does accepting the report mean?
For me, as I think about it and why I chose that language in terms of what I think it means, I, I want to be able to, I want to be able to reference it in a resolution. So we create a, a trail of how the process worked. So we got this report from Sebago, council accepted it. Um, and then it becomes part of, then we reference that in the resolution we passed, so.
That, for me, it's only that much more critical that we're referencing something, not like a report that where we all have these things going around in our head. I mean, it has to be a drawing. I just don't understand how, how we're, and, and you're right, I don't want to spend more money, but I, but I do want to them to deliver what was in the proposal.
Yep.
So at that point, we'll discuss whether we're willing to accept it as is or not, it sounds like. Is that right?
Yeah, and if you think it's, if you think it's, yeah, that's probably, why, why don't we make that the first order of business then? We'll get on the twenty-third, we'll get the report from Sebago, we'll consider it with nothing hanging over our heads, nothing to act on that meeting. I mean, I can't control what anybody else wants to put on the agenda, but I promise I won't put anything on the agenda for a vote. And then we'll have a, have the conversation and if there's a consensus that it's just not enough, then we're gonna have to have a different conversation about what we, what we take up on the seventh. If it's the, if there's a sense that the council's ready to act or, you know, councillors are ready to act, then we'll have a vote on the seventh. Council Baker?
To Leo's point, um, and also I think what Sarah was getting at, um, and revise for my own is, so the next meeting, I'm okay without drawings. I'm okay moving forward conceptually without drawings. However, I really, really, to Leo's point, would like something in writing, a response in writing from Sebago to say, these are your concerns, this is for them to address them.
Right.
These should be included. These are our recommendations. This is why it won't work. What, I, I would like something for us to reference as a council to, instead of, again, to Leo's point, something they've just verbally discussed with us. So we each have a different vision in our minds. I'm okay without drawings, but I really would like something.
It feels like that's, it feels like that's the minimum thing we have to do to close out this portion of the project. I think we'll have some, we may have some disagreement about whether or not, you know, drawings are needed. Um, but it feels like Council Baker's point, and I think it's, is the minimum we, in my view, the minimum that we have to do to move ahead. Council Mark, sure.
Um, I think that's great. Nice summary, Jacob. Um, I was hoping I could just ask, I feel like there's some other information that I'm going to want before I make a decision about the three hundred thousand that is not something necessarily from Sebago. Um, so I guess I just want to put that out there. Um, and maybe I'm the only one and in that case, it's not needed. I'm one councillor. But um, my, my request is that I'm still trying to get my head around what the added values are to the thirty million dollar project as opposed to the three million one that was designed back in, Clint can give me a year, but, or staff can, twenty twenty-one, which was a much smaller project and didn't do a lot of things. And it may be that I look at this Sebago, you know, written report on the twenty-third and go, absolutely, I get it. This has got so much more stuff in it. It makes absolute sense to me why um, we want to move forward on this, but and at least Clint has to speak to the money, but my understanding is that for a certain amount of this money might be available for a different, smaller project. And I'm still trying to understand what the value is we're getting in this newer, much, much bigger project. And for me to understand that, I need some financial figures about um, if we went a different path. What other projects would cost? So for example, I still don't know what the sewer cost would be. We have to replace the sewer lines on Main Street. That's clear. They're old. They need to be replaced. And I'm still not clear. I understand that it's two point six million to replace them and that's on the town. That's quite a part from the Route Two project. But what I'm not clear on is if we don't do those sewer lines during the, a big Route Two project, do we then have added costs as a town? That involve us paying for the rip out of Route Two and the rebuild of Route Two and what kind of added costs are we talking? Is that an additional two or three million or is that seven million or is that five hundred thousand? I mean, I'm sure it's not five hundred thousand, but I need a sense of that because in some ways this project becomes an almost no brainer. If we're gonna have to do those anyhow and the rip out and rebuild would fall on us and be way bigger. So those would be helpful figures for me. Likewise, um, you know, my understanding is that the original project that only did a lot of crosswalks um, between Kelly Road and downtown and ADA compliance sidewalks had a cost that was somewhere around three million and that there might be state money that could be used for just that three million. And um, I need to understand some of those things because there are financial trade offs to whether this project makes sense, not just what are the transformational aspects we can get. So those are the two things that I would like to request is more data on the sewer cost to us. Um, if we didn't do this much bigger project and data on if the original project for just ADA compliance sidewalks and many more crosswalks between Kelly Road and downtown was in fact under three million and there's actually state money that would pay for that, not taxpayer money that would pay for that. I would like to know those two things as I'm making the next financial decision. Thank you.
So we need to decide as a council, like some of these things are, you know, and it, it's, we need to decide as a council, how are we gonna direct staff to answer questions like that? I know, and I, I think, I think there are several, I think there, I know I'm in a position where I'm. I know. And I I think, I think there are several, I think there, I know I'm in a position where I'm ready to, you know, commit the resources to figure out the $300,000 in my view is a chance for us to see what a $30 million project is like and and put us on the path to being able to do that. And that's, you know, the most we can do with the opportunity in front of us. I know that, you know, from a financial standpoint, it could save money to think about what's the least we could do? What's what is the least we can do and things that we have to do um, to address the fact that, you know, public health is at risk and the pollution in the Penobscot River because of the sewer line. So I don't know what's the scenario planning is expensive. It's hard work and I don't know how much time we can ask the town manager to do for these kinds of things.
I guess I just want to say I don't need a very specific figure. I need a vague ballpark. Like I think it's unusual to be looking at a project and not be looking at, okay, we already had a project for this amount. And now we're looking at a much bigger project. So in that case, I want to know two things. I want to know what's the added value I'm getting from that much bigger project. So that's this list of things we're hoping to get. And I also want to know, like, what's the expense if we don't do it? I mean, it seems to me like there's potentially a big expense to us on sewer lines and it seems
I wouldn't be, yeah, I would be comfortable as a town manager putting my name on something, you know, that kind of scenario planning without taking a lot of time to talk to consult. I mean, this is what engineering consultants do. And I I feel like those are the types of questions and ultimately it feels like it's maybe a philosophical question for you in terms of, you know, when we make a decision. But if we're gonna ask the town manager to do that kind of scenario planning, we've got to resource them for it and build the time into the process for it. And I just don't think, I think that's something we end up probably need to vote on. If, you know, if we can't get a majority, if four of us are ready to move forward on October 7th, that's our decision. If four of us aren't, then we have to go back and say, do we want to consider more of this so we can get get more people to a place where they're ready to vote yes or or not? And I understand, I I'm gonna totally respect people who aren't ready to move forward because they don't have enough information. I'll totally respect people who have a philosophical objection to the this opportunity just generally. But I do want to see that we
I guess, Dan, I just like, I mean, I guess I'm gonna say then that I want an order to this effect on the agenda for the next meeting. I would have preferred to get this information before the next meeting. But if it's not possible, I would like an order on the next meeting agenda asking for this information. And again, I am willing to take the broadest ballpark estimate that is the easiest thing for staff to come up with. I do not need a lot of details, but I have absolutely no idea if we're, you know, gonna be out for extra millions of dollars doing the rip out for the sewer ourselves. That drastically changes this calculation for me. And I think for a lot of people in town, it then becomes a pretty obvious answer that you're gonna spend that 3 million on this joint project because otherwise you're gonna spend it ripping out and rebuilding the road anyway. Um, and I think my bar is not just me, it's what other people in town are gonna want to know if this thing ever goes to a bond vote, you know? And I get it, you think it can come later, but I I haven't heard from staff. If this is impossible, I want to know. But if there's some ballpark information, I'd like an order on next meeting for us to at least talk about.
Speaking of hearing from staff, uh, Clint, do you have any thoughts on the feasibility of what's being discussed here?
Well done, Rob. Thank you.
I think you guys are having a wonderful conversation and it's, I am first and foremost, I was gonna say at the end, the Route 2 planning is an interesting process. And at one point it gets suggested why to accept the report, not accept. I think it's time to get to a place where we've closed a door and we're moving ahead through the new door. Whether it's with a project, without a project, doesn't matter, but a new process needs to be add and we've started that and this is how it happens. And it's tough to do at a council level in your me, business meetings. I think, and again, I just want to make sure before I answer this question, that I heard three questions. The difference between the 2021 concept and the current planning we're on, is that 2021 still a $3 million project? And the sewers, what's the difference of cost between the current project to replace the sewers? And is there a savings and how much if we did it in conjunction? You're meaning money because there are obviously things that are non monetary that you have to judge philosophically. I think you leave me with those three questions tonight and we see if there's any headway that we can make with the people that we have. Could I answer questions off the top of my head with my knowledge and experience? Yes. Is it discernibly what percentage accurate? No, I've been a town and city manager for years. I have a good common knowledge of all these things. I can tell you instinctually where these are. But if you want some better answers, we have some people we can task and I can see if we can refine a number of sorts and tell you who we spoke to. We're just all fully acknowledging we're building conversational numbers, not we've designed this, we put it to bid and we now know it's exactly this much money. Let's see. I mean, I think some of these will be answered by this main department of transportation once I get them on the hold. So let's see what they come up with.
Sure. Good, sir.
That's super, super helpful, Clint. And I I guess the only thing I want to add is on the project from 21, my question was, is it still in that 3 million? Yes, but more importantly, I was under the impression that perhaps the MDOT money that already exists, the 2.4 million could be routed to that project instead of toward the 3 million design stage if we chose. Is that possibly correct?
Summary of a question that I've posed to MDOT that I'm hoping to get answered.
We don't know an answer to that, but I'm saying that's part of the answer to me is not just does it still cost 3 million? But also could the MDOT money we already have be routed there if we chose to do it or could it not? Thank you.
All right. So Clint, is your regular routine businesses as town manager, you'll take that on and if you can't answer it, then we'll come back, we'll get Sarah's order on. I I want to get people comfortable. I but I also
Clarification.
Yeah.
The list of questions that have been posed from the beginning is going to be tabled between now and the 23rd. We're not working on those. I'm gonna stop. What I've done to date, I will come back to, but there's no way in the next two weeks, you're gonna get every question that I've received from the council answered. And this and the staff.
Yeah.
And we just, there's no way I can do it.
But yeah.
I don't personally need those at all. Does anyone else? I do not. So thank you.
Just submitted them and then we gave him 44 questions and then he started, this is my concern is that we submit submit questions that way and we start up, start staff down a, down a, down a process of answering them and and now we're not gonna need them. So it's just sort of a council, we have to get ourselves in a position where council is deciding what council, you know, anyone can vote however they want to vote. But I mean, we have to ac judiciously on what we ask in terms of how much work it takes to get get us answers. That's that's my take and I want to respect and what I think my role as chair is to help make sure that when we have these requests of staff, that it's coming from the council and and everyone gives a fair opportunity to weigh in on that decision and not just, you know, have
I just, I want to weigh in that I've been, I have, one of my main questions was cost benefit. You can say cost value and that's one that I think is, I I'm not, as I said previously, I don't, I'm not seeing the value and I'm and I was just really hoping that Sebago was gonna be sharing what the value is because you can't just say this is all for pedestrian and bike bicycles. Like, okay, what is that? I don't even know what that means. We 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 have a pretty safe track record. So what is the value and what is the benefit? And I've not heard, I've not heard that yet. So I'm in line with what Sarah is asking for. And I think the other thing that, you know, Clint had previously mentioned is that, you know, if we if we do nothing, the deal, they're they're still maintaining Route 2. That means at some point they're gonna pave Route 2. That means when when that comes around, that if we're gonna do sewer work, we would dig, I assume that we would time that with whenever they're gonna pave Route 2 and we get out of having to pave Route 2, which is what we're getting, I assume, out of this anyway, is that this is all getting paved, so let's rip it up and do it. So I don't, I'm I'm not, I I would be, I'm very interested in your response to that that last question about how we're saving because I think that is a, that is a fact or a factor is that they're gonna continue to maintain Route 2, which means it will be, it will be surfaced.
I agree that answers to these questions would be really valuable insofar as we can get them. Is there any way that we could perhaps get to the next part of the agenda and perhaps I think we have an obligation to some other folks to try to wrap this up?
Sure, Rob.
I'm sorry. That's not a comment to anyone.
No, no, I get it. This is hard. I I'm sitting next to someone who probably needs to be out of here more than any of us.
I would like to um, table the mini grant and also um, just make a a point on, so this is B. And the only reason is I've I've tried to contact Jasmine because I just want to have a little bit more information regarding the amount of the actual grant as opposed to what we would fund. And so um, if we could, so that I have something to say to you about that. Okay? And then also um, um, MJ Sedlock is an amazing organization person. It was my um, fault that I said that um, we should have her talk on September 23rd. And um, and I would like to have moved that to October 7th if that's possible. Because she won't be here and I would be um, like not a very good replacement for her.
Amazing job.
He's amazing. And that was my fault, not hers. And she pointed it out to me today and I apologize, MJ. Right?
Can you make sure the minutes clearly articulate that Matt Powers is at fault?
I am at fault. It was not MJ. It was me.
I'll send you some synonyms for wrong, you know, bad. All right. Town manager report Clint.
Very concise. I'll speak slow, but to the point. First one, MS4 report state regarding Main Street. There was some information I've been able to share with the council. I want to make, we have to do reports. This is a part of what happens. There were some testing done as is outlined, and this is where I would share for the community, that showed certain bacteria getting to the river. And it's been traced back by our staff. Megan Hess has done a wonderful job. And it appears with the mixture of what's in it, which can be included to human um, added things such as detergent, shampoos, et cetera, are mixed with this bacteria, which is likely to be a sewer exposure. This is part of the normal course of business. That sewer line is old. This is the one on Route 2. And we're starting to see some signs of that, again, 100th anniversary of its installation per Chris Brew this year, 2014 or 2020, sorry, 1924 to 2024. So it's 100 years old. Um, so I just want to make sure the council's aware, didn't want to hide that. But again, this is ongoing. We don't know where this is gonna go. Oh, I was doing so good. Okay. Uh, sorry about that with the mic, but this has been shared with the pub, shared with the council. This has been submitted to the state. It's a state report. We will hear more. I just wanted to update you. That's an ongoing process. We'll keep you apprised as it moves forward. The water, again, part of our requirements to notify you when we're gonna go to bid, this is all funded in your reserve funds, but they are going to bid at the Water District for a boiler. This is kind of where the language is vague, where I have to let you know when we're bidding it, but you have to approve what the bid is. I'm not gonna have a council order to go to bid and a council order to approve, letting you know we're going out and getting those quotes. Um, on a delightful side and all of this is fun, working for the town of Orno, but I also got to meet with James Francis. And I was gonna bring it up as the in his official role with the Penobscot Nation. But we did talk about some of the things, the 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 letter you sent, this is not part of that conversation that is still in process. And I've asked for a little bit more clarification, but one of the things he did share, and I said, why don't you submit some proposals I can bring back to the council? You set aside some funds for certain projects. He's got a couple of good ideas, ones regarding kiosks that could be at a couple location. Old Town is marking a trail that they've identified. The rest of the trails in Orno. If we did them together, it would be a collaborative effort. And I said, we need to see a proposal and he said that would be forthcoming. I don't have a firm timeline. Great meeting, great conversations, and I think things are uh, very helpful there. He did make some some suggestions about doing a assessment of our cultural
Opportunities.
Awareness.
Yeah.
And that would be an official report. And I said, put that together in a proposal as well, so the council could consider that and look at that from a timing perspective. But he recommended it as a good first step, so to speak. Um, comprehensive plan update. I've shared that out with the council. This came up. I've handled this at the staff level that we're working on some different public engagement strategies because we did see some opportunities and I've also shared you a copy of the survey. I think I'd leave that and if you have comment and this rises to a different level, let me know. But I've shared with that in a way that you can become, begin to become aware. And then last, the one I that is not on here. Peter Yazakovich is a great town employee and has shared that he is accepting a new position. So we're gonna begin the process of that. Staff's looking internally. Um, would hopefully get some maybe feedback at some point from the council's individuals, but we gotta look at how we're gonna model communications, a little bit of IT. Um, but I am gonna be working with that, but I I want to thank him. He's been a pleasure to work with in the two months I've been here. And everybody that else has worked with him has enjoyed him thoroughly. Um, but he's got an amazing opportunity waiting for him and I'm so proud of him to be going on to something like he's got a chance at.
Okay, is it, um, does that conclude the, are there any public petitions?
None.
Okay, future gen items, items, request for supporting items. I will email around a draft copy of the resolution and email a blind copy, everybody. And um, we'll keep the commitments to accept the Route 2 stuff on the 23rd and not have anything to vote on ahead of, as part of that.
Can I just, um,
Go ahead, Leo.
On the um, item of concern, I had reached out to you and I think Clint a while ago. And and I would still like to hear, see if we could, um, there was rumor, I don't know if it's rumor or true about um, university closing down um, that some of that affordable housing that's up on, it's in Old Town, it's technically not our purview, but um, it's certainly relevant to us as a community, affordable housing. Um, do you remember what I was, uh, there's a
Yeah, I remember.
What it's called, college, what is it? It's it's like usually it's
Yeah.
Yeah. That was there was, maybe I don't want to speak out of turn.
Talking on College Ave headed towards
Yeah, it's just across the Old Town line.
I think there's some project planning going on over there and maybe we could get an update to the council if that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, I just, I would like to hear if it is, if it were to be going away, maybe it's not. Maybe you know more than I do, but there there was, there was something in the university paper at the end of last year and before it totally happens, I would like to try to see if there's anything we could do to help.
Could we get, I guess, an update from what you can find out? I remember the email. I apologize. It's not something. Well, I don't know. I don't know.
No, no. When when you can, just just future. It's not a really timeline thing.
All right.
Thanks.
All right. And any public comment? Any well, first, no more items of concern?
Yep.
Any public comment? Pete, before you go, any public comment?
No.
Thank you, Pete, for all you've done, by the way.
Thank you, Pete.
Yep.
Appreciate you.
And I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Seconded.
All in favor? It's unanimous? Come on. Yeah. Thank you for sticking with us. I'm sorry. Little bit. You all right? I'm sorry.